Dear Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, right now we give you the glory and the honor and the praise. Lord, for the opportunity right now to come together for the sake of our community. And I'd ask the Lord that throughout our meeting tonight, that first and foremost, we would put the citizens and we would put our town first in all of our thoughts and our actions. So that, Lord, we can make it the best place that we possibly can. I'd ask that you would bestow us wisdom and knowledge in making these decisions to the best of our abilities. Watch over us tonight, Lord Jesus. Lead us, guide us, and be with us. In Jesus's name.
Amen.
Thank you, Ron. Hope you get a chance to look over your minutes.
And we didn't make that change on the...
Okay.
Yeah, I see. Okay.
Make a motion at three minutes. Ask if he's done.
All in second?
Have a motion at second except minutes is read. Any discussion? If not, all in place, say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Motion carries. All right. Hadley, you want to come up and talk to us? Have a seat.
Right here, girl.
What's on your mind tonight?
Give your seat.
Hi, my name is Hadley and I am with the Hometown Helpless Police Club. Recently, our club has been discussing starting a free library in Silicon Grove. We would like to put it in the City of Bike Life Rangers. This free library is a place where people can come, get books, read books, and take books home. I have provided you with some pictures of what they, of what they might look like. Our club would be responsible for all maintenance and upkeep. We believe this is a great way to provide free reading material to our community. Do you have any questions?
So they get to keep the books that they take out of there or do they put back, books back in? I've heard of both.
You can take the books and keep them forever or you can return them.
Okay.
Now, Ms. Hadley, where do you get the books for the free library?
We, our club will provide them.
Okay, good answer.
So is it intended mostly for kids or for adults too?
Um, everyone.
Everyone? Okay.
Do you have a favorite one of these?
Um, we think the easiest one would be the box cart.
So you're gonna, you'll build that?
Um, we don't know. We're gonna vote.
Okay.
Would this be year-round, like even in the middle of winter? Oh, yeah. That looks more up-to-date.
No, don't say that. It must go off.
Three days ago. So do you guys have a timeline when you would want to start this project or?
I don't know.
Okay. So as of right now, you're just requesting permission to be able to put the structure in the, you're talking about the mini park over here?
In the city, in the city.
Oh, in the big city. Okay, I'm sorry.
And you said by the benches? Is that by the big swings? Like up on the hill? Okay.
Or is that that one circle seat? It's got that circle and the bench. Is that the bench?
That's it.
It's right there on top, not too far from the highway.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any question?
Would you be looking at doing something like that and put a post in the ground or?
You mean like this one?
Yes, like that one.
But that's still to be decided.
Any other questions? Oh, we sure appreciate you bringing your information and presenting it.
Your idea.
You guys want further discussion or you want to take the action?
Well, as long as we have consensus.
And yeah, I mean basically just following the policy of that they would ask permission for any, you know, any structures or maintenance on the property.
And then bring back the what their final decision or what they're gonna do. If they're gonna put it on a post or not. Or what they're gonna do.
Go ahead and give tentative approval and let them come back with their definite location and...
And definite plan, what they're gonna do.
That means we think it's a good idea. And when your Police Club decides what they want to put on and exactly where they want to put it, do you think you could come back and show us? Would that be okay?
All right, sounds good.
So what this means is, it's okay. You guys can go ahead and go on it because we think it's a good idea. And when you pick everything, what you want and where you want, could you please come back and show us? Because we think you're awesome. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Linda, you want to come up and talk to us?
Sure. Excuse me, Dad. I was asked to come and answer questions that you have about batting cage.
Okay.
That we put in, attempted to put in and...
Well, we all understand kind of where it's at right now and what transpired. I guess the question is where do we want to go from here? What do you want to, or what do you envision?
Jude has given me permission to ask Clay to build it, to rebuild it. And then the school will pay for the structure. Lincoln Rec bought the initial batting cage for use for the city. And then the school built the sledge to mount it on because we had the wires marked before we put it in there. And there are three lines of wires there. And we felt that Ray thought he could construct a structure that was sturdy enough to house that batting cage. And if we needed to move it, then we could move it if there needed to work on the lines. However, that structure does not withstand the wind. And then unfortunately with the net not coming down at the end of the summer, it was destroyed. So now we have to rebuild it.
So is such, is any of what's left salvageable for any purpose?
No. We would like to call Dig Safe to come out again. And Clay would like to look at where the lines are and see whether he can, in fact, cement it into the ground at the location where we had the, let's say, temporary one, the one that wasn't in the ground.
Okay. Is that different than where it is now?
No, that would be in the same spot. We just, there's just not an ideal spot to put, those lines run all the way down the length of the field. And then I believe there were some on the first baseline too that prohibited us from putting it on that side. And then we have the trees in the valley there which would always be underwater and so it wouldn't be usable.
How about in, outside of the outfield out there in that unused area?
Well, hopefully if we ever got to have co-ed tournaments or whatever, I would hate to take that part of the field away. Because then our fence would come down, the snow fence would come down and we would want to use the entire fence all the way to the permanent metal fence in the back.
I guess I'm talking outside of the permanent fence to the...
Oh, clear for back there.
To the northwest over there.
Perhaps it'd be easier.
Yeah, it would not, because we have to have electricity and pick, and hook our pitching machine up there. And that is transporting all that stuff down there. Which, you know, if that's the option that we have, it's not the best location for us.
Bad part is that alleyway in there, there's a fairly shallow sewer line in there. In fact, even when they put the lights up years back, there was concern when the utility company came in that even those trucks, if it was soft, would damage that line. I mean, it's that shallow, so.
Okay.
It's just, we have to live with that part of it, so.
Right.
What about the cost for materials and stuff is the school?
Um, yes, the school is going to pay for those materials. And then Clay will donate his time again.
If it would work best, I totally agree. If we can cement it in, I mean, make it permanent if we can find a spot.
He just doesn't feel like it will withstand our wind with the net on it without being cemented in. The baseball one is cemented in and it's, you know, and it's fine.
So if you got it the way you want it, at the end of the season, the netting would be taken off of it?
Well, the way that I thought that it was going to happen is that the city would be responsible for putting, or the city, the school would be responsible for putting the net up because we would use it during the school season.
Right.
And then we also use it in the summer season for our softball program here during the summer. And then the city would be responsible for taking the net down. And that way it would be shared responsibility. That's how I feel it should work since both of the families will use it.
Well, I guess first and foremost, we need to start at square one and go back and re-ascertain that location, real, you know, if you can, can't do. You know, then I guess, even with everything you've told us, I'd like to see, you know, some illustrations and just outlines of what this is gonna entail as far as the structure part of it.
Okay.
What's Clay thinking like, you know?
Just a batting cage. It's three, yeah, it's three square pieces just like the baseball one.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're wondering. I mean, like, heavy duty like that or like lighter duty?
Um, the one we had, the lighter duty one, again, did not withstand the wind and the net. So no, he's thinking iron.
Would it be possible if you had permanently mounted posts, but at the end of the season, the whole structure could be disassembled and laid back down and put away? Just leaving, you know, during the winter season, just all you'd have is just these posts out of the ground?
I think that's what, I think that's what she's saying.
Does it sound like the frame stays up?
Well, the frame needs to be anchored on the ends with wire. And those would be in the ground. So you would have to pull those, the wires and the anchors down at the end of the season if you're gonna tear down the entire structure.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what benefit you get if you have posts cemented into the ground and then the frame put in there. What, how that's gonna benefit taking those out?
Yeah. Any else have any thoughts or questions? Well, I'm, obviously, like, go ahead.
So get well rolling.
But like I say, we just need to work in conjunction with Terry and make sure we're, like I say, get Dig Safe in and see exactly where everything's at. Probably like before we proceed with it, have it laid out, show us exactly where it's gonna be and stuff.
Okay, and how would you best like me to do that, to let you know that?
Are you looking at a short timetable?
Well, season started two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And so if I'm going to use it at all this season, then it's gonna be done within the next two weeks because then my free labor becomes busy spraying and...
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
That is kind of important.
It is kind of important because of, you know, he'll get it done, but it's gonna have to be within the next two weeks.
Well, I'm just saying, I, you know, before we do any construction, I'd like to see the layout.
I understand that.
We've, you know, made contact with Dig Safe. We know where everything's at. Show us where, you know, put flags, this is where it's gonna be and then let's look at it, so.
Spray paint it.
Spray paint it or flag it.
Yeah.
And we don't have to wait till the next meeting to do that.
No, I'd say...
Well, I hope, because season will be over.
Dig Safe is usually two days or...
I think three days they have to come out, yeah. And then, yeah, I can spray paint it to show you and I can show you some diagrams of what we're putting together. But it'd just be a basic cage, three.
Okay. Actually, my thought would be we probably ought to call Dig Safe.
Right, yes, yes, uh-huh, yes.
Now, do you want us to keep the net at the fairgrounds? Or do you want to take the net back to the school or, I mean, after the end of summer?
Right, and I'm not sure where we kept the baseball net. But I would assume that we would house them together.
Well, now there's an extra baseball net down in that crow's nest at the school. And there's another baseball net down in the round building at the fairgrounds. Does that one mean that indoor, that indoor one?
Right.
That's down at the football field. And the one that's normally out there is in that round building.
I'm glad you know that, so I'll put it up. It makes three days. We can hit something.
Yeah, because you got three days of rain rolling.
That's, that's the other part. We were down there looking at stuff for insurance purposes and it is soft.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
So, well...
Well, I just, you know, I worked really hard with Lincoln Rec to get them to buy this for Sylvan. They were happy to do it and I was so anxious after all these years to finally get a batting cage for the softball program. And so I'd like to get one that will stay and can be usable and so we can keep building that program for our kids here.
Okay.
And if we can move as quickly as we can, yeah, I know it's supposed to rain the next three days. So I don't know what that will mean for Dig Safe.
Only two, three inches.
But if we could expedite it so I don't have to wait till the next meeting and meet with Terry and you. And if you approve the layout, then get it done.
So does anybody have any objections? Otherwise, I'd say by consensus.
By consensus, post haste.
It's up to you.
I'm just taking minutes.
Sure meeting.
You're the one that's gonna come back and say, hey, we're gonna do this right.
As soon as she gets the spray painted, you go down there and check and make sure.
You're gonna be the okay's. That's what I'm totally trying to figure out. So you're gonna be the one that says...
Yeah, I'll be happy to come down and just, like I say, I just, you know, have a good visual idea how this is gonna look.
Absolutely.
But if nobody has any objections, I'd say let's go ahead and proceed. And we'll have Terry call Dig Safe post haste here and weather allowing, we'll do what we can.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
And like, Linda, at the end of the summer, when everybody's done with it, just, you know, give us a holler, give Terry a holler and say, could you please?
I will do that.
Because I don't know, see, I think there was just a bunch of miscommunication. Is the school gonna take it down? Are we gonna take it down? And I think that's, I mean, that's what I see.
Yes, I will. I will write a note. That way I got it.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thank you, Linda.
Mr. Lad, your name's on the list, your name's on the list here. What you got for us?
Well, I was, uh, coming up to talk about summer baseball, kind of on the same topic that Mrs. Terry was talking about. Last several years, we've done it through the Lincoln Rec, T-ball, Coach Pitch Midgets. So basically K through, or pre-K through six. And there's been a lot of discussion the last two years between the parents and a lot of the folks that helped the coaches on bringing it back to Sylvan and doing it internally here. The last few years, we've done it where basically they did all of our sign up, all of our uniform ordering, all that stuff. Kind of managed that side of it for us and then we were still responsible for, you know, coaching and all that sort of thing. So a lot of the parents and a lot of the coaches were on board. So we decided to go ahead and try and make a go of it. Started working through, looking for sponsors and that sort of thing. And I went and met last week with Lincoln Rec to let them know that we were planning on doing it on our own. So I called Jennifer, I'm sure you guys know my dad was, did it for years and years and years when I was little. So I was asking him how it went and of course, you know, nothing's the same. But one of the things he mentioned was Rachel had an account and he was a signer on it. So I called Jennifer and asked if that was still in existence or, you know, what the deal was. So it sounds like it's not, but that's how we ended up here. So basically, we've got, I think we've got sponsors set up to purchase equipment. We've got a lot of verbal agreements. We're working with Ray to do uniforms and hats, that sort of thing. So I think we're pretty much rolling. The one ticket item that we kind of overlooked was umpires. We were told that City paid for it and I talked to Jennifer and she said, no, no, we weren't paying for that. So not a big deal, you know, we were, we can, we're far enough ahead, we can still figure it out. But that was basically one of the things I was gonna come chat with you guys about. If there's any available funding, I mean, I know you guys are stretched out on other things, but, you know, just wanted to put it out there before we got rolling, so.
So if you guys break out from Lincoln Rec, will you still play the same gamut of, same league, same...
Yep. So the Lincoln Rec, basically their role was, the Twin Lakes League still exists, so it's, you know, tipped in to Toma. Everything was still the same, the commission's there. I think there's a hundred and fifty dollar buy-in for each team. And if I remember right, I think the bank was covering that for both Lincoln and Sylvan. Essentially, we're just taking on the role of getting sign-up sheets, getting uniforms, doing all that stuff. We were already doing the coaching and everything. There was a lot of discussion on where our money was going when we were sending it over there. You know, what were we getting in return? And so it was just a decision to, we'll just keep it in-house. We'll do it our own, so.
So are you, your sponsoring stuff is just basically for the equipment?
That's what we've been working on right now, is equipment, replacing everything that we can.
What happens with the equipment that's been over here? Does it get returned?
So currently, that was one of the discussions they had. It wasn't brought up in the meeting, but it didn't take long for Josh to get the text message. So we don't have much equipment that was owned by the Lincoln Rec. I think we had some catcher's gear and a pitching machine, I think. So overall, we still own everything. So if we weren't able to replace, you know, everything, we'd still have a functional, you know, set. Not pretty, but functional. So the hope is that we'd be able to replace the majority of the equipment in year one. It's really not as pricey as I thought it was gonna be. At first, I was thinking three-year plan, let's get it all replaced in a rotation. But, you know, for kids' gear, it's not terrible. So we've been talking to local businesses and folks trying to, you know, get some funding down.
So the, one of the things the city has done for, as long as I've been here, it's only been three years, that we always pay the coaches. So we have those funds available that go to the baseball every year anyway. We have, we do have a Parks and Rec fund which will be encompassing those things. So I guess I will, I'm just gonna throw that out there. I'll throw it to you guys. If you want paid, the coaches, or if you would like to volunteer your time, that money probably could be put in that other place.
Sure.
Just as a thought.
I know for me...
I'm not saying that's how it should be. I'm just saying that that's something they've done. There is money that goes to the baseball every year and the softball, so.
So in the recent years, who was paying for the Umpires?
Well, that was one thing that was miscommunicated. We thought it was the city, but that was actually Lincoln Rec was taking care of that. So that funding that we were sending over per kid was covering that, which is good. But like I said, we can take that in, we can cover that. Usually you pay the Coach Pitch and the Midgets umpires, you got a behind the plate in a field, so. And if anybody wants to umpire, speak up. Always looking, Will. So that's basically where we're sitting at.
Where to pay a fee to play?
I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars in it.
No, I mean each kid, isn't there a fee?
So the hope is by taking it back in to ourselves here, that eventually we could eliminate that or significantly reduce it. As of now, a lot of the parents and the coaches like having their t-shirt, or the parents of the kids like having their t-shirts and their hats that they keep each year. So it's hard to, it's hard for me to justify asking a sponsor to pay for, you know, a jersey that's gonna stay with the kid, we're gonna have to replace every year. So if that's the case, then I imagine they'll still have that fee of purchasing the hat and the t-shirt, but...
What was the fee for Lincoln Rec to play? Do you remember?
I want to say twenty-five or thirty. And I think that'll probably be, you know, by the time you include the ball cap and the hat, it'll probably be pretty close. The hope is that we can reduce that. And actually, after this first year or two, if once we get everything replaced, we should be able to reduce that a little bit, so. And I know Ray can do it for a pretty good price.
Was there any one issue that kind of precipitated you guys wanting to make this break?
Well, I think there's been a lot of discussion over the last few years about when we're sending that money, what are we getting back in return? When you play, and we've got the same helmets that we've had for nine years or whatever and the foam's falling out and it just doesn't look good. And then you go to Lincoln and you play and they all got brand-new blue shiny helmets. It's a little, little disconcerting. I think a lot of it was communication, you know, maybe us not asking, maybe, you know, it's a two-way street. But I think that was the big thing for us. We just decided to do it on our own and not worry about it. You know, we do every, every baseball team we have currently is through another, through another business or, you know, whatever you want to call it. Lincoln Rec handles K through six. K Team Ball is in Lucas and Legion Ball is in Lincoln. So, you know, we thought it was a good opportunity to try and keep it local and get it going again, so. So really, I was here just to tell you guys, kind of give you guys a heads up that that's what we were doing. If you guys have any questions, if there's any, if there's any available funds, we would love to, you know, we're not gonna turn it down. We're still in the process. I've been working with Josh and Kendra and trying to figure out, you know, what we want to buy, you know, what we need to, you know, what kind of funds we have allowable, you know, to move forward, so.
The one thing is make sure that you give us a schedule for the games because they do get the field ready.
And I think that meeting is coming up at the end of the month. So I talked to Tommy Berger, he's the commissioner of the league. And I think they're gonna set that meeting for end of this month, beginning of next month. So we should have a schedule at that point.
And then depending on what you decide to do, usually Tommy will give it to me because he's been the coach, you know, kind of the one that's loved that coaching in the past, but give me a list of, you know, if you want to keep doing that, a list of the coaches. We play once per night, per coach.
Yep. And that was one of the things, I know we had talked about, I didn't realize the coaches got paid. And I'm just a, just help out. So obviously I don't have any say in whether that continues or not. I know in talking to Tommy and Josh, they both sounded like, you know, hey, it's great, but not necessary. But I'm not gonna, you know, speak on that part. So like I said, if there's any additional funding that we could, you know, utilize, it's great. Like I said, the umpires was the one thing that we kind of overlooked. But I'm sure we can, you know, find that far enough ahead in the game, so.
Do you know off the top of your head how many games there are?
If we don't host a tournament, which I think changes each year, I think they kind of work it around the league. If we don't host a tournament, last, I think we have four home games. So, and I figure, I think they pay twenty bucks a game for the behind the plate and fifteen for the in the field. So, you know, seventy dollars. Is that about right? Have you done it, Jason?
Yeah, I have, but I haven't done all the games. I've missed a few, so I don't know if it's accurate. But I remember getting around sixty, it was below a hundred that I got for the year.
Okay. I think that's about, pretty close. So like if you do, you know, if you do two games behind the plate, you get forty bucks. So it's usually Tommy helps us out with that. us out with that. And then I think the infield guys get fifteen, so. And I talked to Nick Pounds, I think Lucas is twenty-five and fifteen, so I think we're right, right, right where we need to be, so.
Steve, can I say something?
Sure.
Hey, I just wanna be a voice for Lincoln Rec, 'cause I sat on the board for years. Um, at the end of the season, we always ask the coaches if they need new equipment, because, uh, we purchase new equipment at the end of each year, so if Sylvan needed some new equipment, then, you know, it would've been purchased for them had it been communicated with the Lincoln Rec. Um, and, uh, that, entry fee, that twenty-five dollars, which is pretty nominal when you think about all the equipment that we do purchase for them and the umpire fees and the new balls and the game balls that, you know.
That's something I didn't mention.
Yeah. So, I know, I worked for years trying to get the communities together. So, I'm kinda sad that they're pulling apart, for I'm not sure what reason, other than, um, you know, something wasn't asked, so they didn't know whether to deliver it, 'cause we don't know the supply bank, we don't know that it, there's a need there. Um, but anyway, just a voice for Lincoln Rec, but we are trying to do the best over there to provide all that stuff for the use of the county.
And I will echo that. I do think that the communication was part of it. Um, but that's what, that's what we're sitting anyway, so.
I guess that would be my question, you know, are we severing ties where if this doesn't work, would we still be able to go back to Lincoln Rec?
It's just baseball, they're not talking about soccer or basketball.
Right, everything still goes through Lincoln Rec for, for, correct. And that was one of the things we talked to them about. Um, I hope, I hope, I, I think that was talked about after I left, that, that, that was a potential, um, you know, we still do, um, flag football, soccer, basketball, all that still goes that way. Uh, really the reason we were looking at this is 'cause it's an individual league. Um, it really isn't, Lincoln Rec doesn't run the league, the league is its own entity and we were just, you know, doing that side. So, everything else will still run through, you know, like my kids, I, we did, uh, flag football, soccer, basketball, we did all that this year, so, or we're getting ready to do soccer, so. Um, still, there's still that, uh, relationship there, not trying to sever that entirely, just, baseball for years was on this, you know, done on our own. I know Lucas tipped and all them do that on their own, so. Anyhow.
Well, I'd say just keep in contact with us, season approaches, see where you're at. Just keep the communication up with us.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? All right, thank you Zach.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Marshall, you wanna come present your wares?
My stuff's not near as exciting as what you've been listening to. Uh, Jennifer and Steve and I spent about forty minutes over at the fairground this afternoon, just inventorying basically. Um, Larry and I had gone through the same process eight years ago, and I thought we had everything in pretty good shape. And quite frankly, I was a little frustrated after our tour this afternoon that there was still so much unaccounted for. But, so for example, some of the things that we looked at, uh, on page three of your proposal there, um, the first thing that, that comes up is location three, building one, uh, which is the, what we've got labeled as the storage building, that's the red building.
Metal building.
The music building. Um, we've got fifty-eight thousand five sixty-one on that right now. We, we basically feel we could reduce that to thirty thousand and be just fine. That still, that leaves more than twenty-five dollars a square foot to put that building back up. Um, on the octagon building, based on the square footage and, and anticipating that you wouldn't put an octagon building back up, but something more, um, rectangular, Morton Building type building, uh, to keep the same square footage, you could put something back up for about twenty thousand dollars instead of thirty-six thousand dollars. So those were two things that we felt we could reduce. Then looking at, um, at the ball fields, um, we really don't have anything on the policy for the lights. We don't have anything listed for the scoreboards, and we don't have anything listed for the dugouts. And we were looking at about, I've got other cities with ball fields and lights, so I told them I'd go back and, and, you know, cross-reference some of our other files to see what kinda coverages we got on some of our other light packages. Scoreboards, uh, pretty much the type of scoreboards you've got there, you're looking at about five to seven thousand dollars each, if you had to replace those, okay? And the dugouts, Steve and I were looking at the ones on the softball field with, you know, the cover over them, probably, you know, a thousand, twelve-hundred bucks a piece. And on the baseball field, you know, probably a thousand dollars total. And then, we didn't have anything on the Legion stand building. Um, I don't know why we didn't ever have that building listed, other than maybe that we thought the Legion was covering it or something, I don't know. But, um, and there was discussion about whether or not that building would even be replaced if something happened to it, and, you know, all these kinda things. But, you know, twelve thousand dollars on that building would probably be plenty, and that wouldn't cost very much to put that on there.
That's just the building, that's not the contents.
Right. The restroom, the new, the new restroom down there, we've got just shy of forty thousand on it. Steve thought we probably oughta bump that up to about fifty, and I agree. You know, that, uh, today was the first time I've actually been in the fairgrounds, you know, since, well, eight years ago. And, you know, I've looked at that building as I drive by, but that, that's a nice building. And, um, then the other thing that we looked at is the concession stands on the, uh, the ball fields. Um, the limits, I, I don't know where those limits came from, quite frankly. Um, but the one on the baseball field, we had twenty-one thousand on it and we're gonna reduce it to fifteen. And we had seventeen thousand on the one on the softball field, we're gonna bump it up to twenty. The, the other thing that gives us a little bit of wiggle room in all this, is EMC covers all your property with a total blanket. So all of the little pieces of coverage collectively add up to one massive limit, which on the total city property right now, we've got one million five hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So, if we're underinsured, um, on particular buildings or, or whatever, the, the blanket helps us erase those errors, okay? And, and quite frankly, from, from just two years ago, the policy that started April first of twenty-seventeen, our total blanket limit was only a one-point-two-nine million. So we're up almost three hundred thousand dollars from where we were two years ago. On your total premium for the total package, it's up seven hundred and fifty-two dollars from last year, um, which is five-point-four percent. That's very modest of what I've been having to explain most places I'm delivering renewals. Um, most of that increase is in the linebacker coverage. Your linebacker coverage is up two hundred and seventy-four dollars, which is about twenty percent. And we're just seeing a lot of, lot of more claims lately in the linebacker coverage, which is your public official's liability, okay? That's what covers you guys and the decisions that you make, uh, as the governing body. Um, outside of that, the, uh, the liability premium was up about sixty-five bucks, but we got two lines of coverage in the liability now. If you look on page, um, page six, the second bold section there, sexual abuse and sexual misconduct, uh, is now included in the general liability. Uh, historically, that's been an exclusion, and now it's a coverage for the five hundred dollar claim per incident. And at the very bottom of the list, uh, they've added coverage municipal violent event response coverage for a hundred thousand dollars per event with a hundred thousand dollar aggregate. So if you blow the hundred thousand on one event, you're done for the year. But, uh, and each person, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. So if the city were to end up in a lawsuit over how you handled some violent event that occurred in your city, um, now there's coverage for that type of thing. So those are two coverages that we don't, that we actually don't have right now, that's coming in with the new policy. And that, uh, so then the property is up three hundred and ninety-six dollars, which is five-point-eight percent. But we have five percent more property coverage. So the actual rate increase is less than a percent, which property has been just skyrocketing. So to see a less than one percent increase of the rate, quite frankly, I was shocked. So.
Yes, sir.
That Legion building down there, when I got involved with the town, it's just there. I mean, it doesn't belong, it belongs to the Legion, but it, it's a building that's big there. Nothing against it or anywhere, it's just there.
You want us to pick up something otherwise?
Legally, the city owns it, according to the county. When they, when the property was sold to the city in nineteen ninety-three, that was included. And so legally, the parcel, the, the space there, including the building, is owned by the city. I know, I don't know what happened, but in ninety-three-
I don't know either.
It is-
It's, it's there, it belongs to them.
Do you pay taxes on it?
I don't know.
Then you don't own it. I don't mean that, like, I'm just saying, like, that, that's what, it comes to us, it's under us, under the tax bill for us, is listed. And I, I did check on that. I mean, but-
What?
I'm just saying if you're not receiving something on that parcel.
Right, right. Pete, where, where, do you want the, did you have a question about the insurance, or were you questioning the insurance, or what?
No, nothing.
Does the Legion insure it?
I'm just, the building just sits there, I mean, it's-
Right.
Nothing against it or on it.
Well, but, but look at it this way, too. You know, we, we realize that it's, uh, I don't wanna say it, it's part of the tradition of the fair and all that, but like you heard him say, you know, what's the chances if, if, if we sustained a loss and all, lost the buildings down there, would that particular building be replaced by the Legion? Probably not, right?
It would be, it's just there, it's a building.
I, I realize that. But, but even at that, you know, whether or not it gets rebuilt or not, you, you're gonna have costs in having to clean it up if it gets destroyed. So, you know, twelve thousand dollars, you know, in the grand scheme of things here, it really isn't that much just to make sure that it's covered, you know? Like say if nothing else, just to clean it up if it does get destroyed. But then if it doesn't cost that much cleanup, then there'd always be some seed money to come back if somebody wanted to do something else. I mean, it's, it's really not a very big portion of our policy, so I, I don't think you're gonna get any contention from anybody about it, so. Uh, I mean, obviously it's a physical building, it's there, so we gotta deal with it. So. Anything else?
I don't know, unless you, anybody's got any questions about any of the other coverages, you might take a look at the, uh, list of vehicles on page eight, and the list of equipment on page seven.
Is there anything that comes to your mind that we don't have on that list?
Did you look?
Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
There's one right there.
One thing we talked about, uh, you know, obviously the water plant itself is, is insured. But I was telling Marshall, I said, you know, if you go in that building and you look at that bank of electronics and stuff that controls the pumps and the water tower and everything, uh, I think there's a little more investment there, especially if we have to replace it. Because anything they're doing with the water, same way with the lift station, you know, it's underground. Now, of course, as we had our conversation, probably the worst thing that could happen to a lift station is it get flooded. River comes out, floods it. Well, the policy just allows floods, right Marshall? Okay. So that's something we need to at least kinda establish what the, what the value of that lift station is. And if this policy doesn't cover it, then maybe we need to be thinking about finding somebody that would cover just that one item. Or is there, is there a-
If it's in a floodplain, you can buy a flood policy. But that's a separate, totally separate insurance.
But it's not in a floodplain. Is it?
Well, who's to say?
Right now, I, I gotta go to the next meeting on the floodplain because some of it changes, but.
Yeah, they read classes.
Right, right, right now, we're, we're in the middle of discussion on the floodplains.
Who else?
Lady Guy's not going, so they-
Right, but-
Are we missing anything? No, not that I know of, 'cause like, you know, the old city truck, uh, Firepumper, Dodge, that's over there, and Chevy dump truck, I stand by it. And then, uh, Red Bull truck, that's on that, and the three-fifty, yes. And the trailer, the axle, that's-
Well-
That's the trailer, that's right.
We need to have, we need to have Mark come visit with us about that, 'cause that situation has changed.
Look at this, right here, we've gone over this before, but that's, well, it'd be a-
Yeah. All hands on deck, you might see it running, but you just never know. I mean, but like say, its impact on our insurance rating is not what it is.
But it's being cut in some way?
I don't know. It's not listed on ours, right? Okay. But like I say, we need to visit with Mark about that and see what-
So you're going to check into the value of the electronics in the pump station?
Yeah, we'll have Terry get ahold of somebody that can talk to us about what it'd cost to replace that, the contents, the mechanical inside.
And the lift station?
Well, lift station and the water.
Both.
Pump house, you know? Say we lost that building, if we had to replace all that big bank of controls that runs the pumps, plus your chlorinator and all that, I don't think we'd touch it.
What, what do we got it at now? Eighty-one thousand on the building.
Well, I guess my concern is.
The electronics would be personal property.
Right.
The pumps themselves are typically insured as part of the building.
Okay. But my concern, like we were talking though, you know, these other buildings we've talked about, we have some say so about what we want. When it comes to the water pumps and the lift station, KDHE is going to come in and tell us what we're going to replace it with.
Right.
Would you agree? I mean, they're going to have criteria that we're going to have to follow. So it's kind of out of our hands, so we want to make sure we're covered.
Right. And that's why I think it's important to involve the technical people.
Right, right. So.
And we went through this exercise about five years ago on the water tower. And got the recommendation back, and that's why we, the limit on the water tower is where it is now.
Yeah. So anybody have any questions for Marshall, other than what we've talked about?
Thanks, Henry.
Well, is that outdoor sign, is that like our sign out here?
You mean all the city sign there? It's probably not running with the rain.
It should be.
Who what?
What are you talking about? The city sign.
The LED board sign?
Oh.
Yeah, man. The electronic sign. Would that be under the outdoor sign?
I'm trying to figure out if that's like road signs, because there's several.
Marshall?
Like the road signs.
The city information sign, is it covered?
Have been snapped off.
An electronic sign out here?
Yeah, I believe there's a, and it doesn't show up anywhere on this, but there's.
Is it tied onto this building?
There's actually a list of coverages that are extensions, and outdoor signage is one of the extensions.
There's an outdoor sign at the bottom of page five.
Very last one, it says twenty-five thousand dollar option to increase.
But that, that didn't cover the scoreboard again, because you said those weren't listed. I mean, those are outdoor signs, aren't they, kind of, I mean?
Yeah, we could probably make a good case for that. Yeah. I don't think that's what it, I don't think that's the intention of this.
Well, I was just curious, and I was just wondering what that covered exactly.
We could make a good argument.
Yeah, because it's not really, it doesn't say like advertising or sports or anything, it's just a generic.
Typically, the, the thought process is billboards, you know, the event signs, that kind of stuff.
Question, Steve?
Yes.
On this Rhinomore on the, uh, what?
Right.
Is that, is that the bush right there?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I'll be again. Thank you. Thank you. Keep that. Everybody else has got a copy.
Any other question?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys continuing to put your confidence and integrity insurance agency.
So will you, uh, follow up with this, what you, like, what we were talking about with the baseball lights and that part of it?
Yep, I will run something over to the underwriter tomorrow on all of that. I don't know how long it'll take to get anything back, because right now is renewal season. Every city in the state's renewing April first, and I have to just stand on their fingers to get your renewal back in time for your March meeting, so. We may not know anything specific until after May, or April one, but.
I guess hearing nothing from anybody on council, everybody's good with the bulk of the package as it, as we've been continuing to.
I know in the.
With the little tweaks.
I know in the past, we went ahead and paid the premium, and then if there was an adjustment that came later, would that be the same process?
Yeah, let's hold off and.
Wait for.
Till the, you know, close to the first of April and.
Okay.
See if we can't get all this done and get it in one, one deal.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'll stay at your home. Rick?
Good evening. Thank you. Um, I've, I've got some questions for the council. I've been in Sylvan Grove for about four years now. Um, I, I don't know, uh, a lot about the ordinances and stuff. I, we did talk to Jennifer about, uh, some of the ordinances and stuff, and I looked online, I thought that might be on the website and stuff, but they, they weren't. Uh, however, she told me I could, um, research the ordinances and stuff, and, and I plan to do that in, in, in the future and everything. But I've got some questions about, uh, how ordinances and, and zoning in, in the, in the city goes. We were, I was recommended by Jennifer to address the council here, and hopefully, uh, I'm not wasting your time with the questions and stuff, but, uh, I, I would like, um, to get informed on it, so, uh, I at least know how to, um, react and, and what to expect, you know, from the city of Sylvan Grove. One of the questions that I have right off the bat is, um, when ordinances, uh, no matter what it is, um, if, if there's a violation of that ordinance, what is the procedure for addressing that? Either as a grievance or as, if a person has, um, you know, uh, an ordinance problem with the city, who addresses that? Who's the, who's the person that, uh, will, will address that issue? I understand that during the federal grant time, there was a compliance officer. Is that true?
Yeah, correct.
Does that compliance officer still work for the city?
Yeah.
Right here.
Dean?
Right behind you.
No.
Right behind you.
Okay. Is, is, is that the route we take?
Well, his, his responsibility first and foremost is to, uh, view the city on a timely basis and look for violations of ordinances as such, and then report. Dean's done a wonderful job, he's, you know, he's, he's got a lot of experience and stuff, and we're thrilled to have him. Uh, you know, it's an ongoing process. There's some issues we've been dealing with for a long time, and we're still dealing with them, but, you know, we're still pushing. So is there a particular issue that you're concerned about?
Um, well, when, when you drive around the city, I mean, it doesn't, it, it's, it's obvious that there are violations of ordinances if, if, if I'm looking at and hearing things, you know, from hearsay and stuff like that, things like salvage vehicles, uh, you know, condemned property, uh, you know, different things like that. Um, so, yeah, there, there, those, those things do exist in Sylvan Grove. Um, I, I, I heard your prayer at the beginning of the thing, and want to make this the best community, uh, that, that it can be, you know, and, and doing it all for the glory of God. And I, I appreciate, you know, you, you praying like that, because as, as a resident of Sylvan Grove, um, you know, that's, that's our desire also, is that, you know, this city thrives. You see so many, so many small towns just go into the dirt, and, and it's a shame. Um, you know, I come from western Kansas originally, and a lot of towns around there are just nothing but trash. It's, it's sad. They used to be such neat communities, and, and now they're just, they're just totally gone. So, um, that, that's my desire also. Uh, so, yeah, but there, there, there are some, some issues and stuff that, and I think it's, it's quite obvious. Uh, one of the questions that I have too is, once, once there's a violation of an ordinance, uh, that, that's reported and, and the homeowner or the, the person involved in it is contacted, i- is there a timeframe that a person has to, to get that remedied?
Yeah. Probably, Dean, if you would want to just kind of explain the basic.
Depends on the specific ordinance, but, uh, I mean, there's some different times that they follow state statutes as far as like general nuisance ordinances or inoperable vehicle ordinances or condemning properties, that, that takes an extra step with, with the council there, but so you know, we've been in the process of, of remedying some of these problems for quite some time, and in the last couple of months, there's been some stalling, and that has been talked about repeatedly in the last couple of months. And anticipate, uh, the council's, um, further decision, hopefully later on in this meeting, actually, on some of those issues. But, for example, on, on a vehicle ordinance, an inoperable vehicle has a thirty day period of basically, uh, you know, it's, it's a little different if you're working on it, if, uh, it's a shop maybe, or that's some of the things we're kind of working out here. But, um, after a, a thirty day period, a certified letter gets sent, and there's some time to respond there, and there's publication that can made in the paper, and so on and so forth, and so more time goes by, and, and, and the city of Sylvan Grove has taken action on those things in the past. There's several vehicles in the impound lot right now. So I would assure you that. I think the council is still leaning towards the right direction, and they're working towards some of those issues that have been brought forth between other citizens and some of the people in the community, for example, that have businesses that, you know, revolve around those type of issues. So on that particular issue, um, I would just ask for your patience as, as a community and as a council, they decide what progress or what road we're taking on some of that. But, um, on general nuisance and trash stuff, I mean, I can't even tell you the numbers of how much stuff has been cleaned up, it's been a lot. Couple of years that I've been here in the council, the city's really come together, a lot of people have done it at a time, and put a lot of effort into it, and, but the city has had to debate some things, and the city has had to take hard lines, so they've proven they've done that in the past, and I think that's part of what they're looking for.
And I can tell you, on some of the derelict properties, some of those are tied into our, uh, housing grant, and we have a timetable, we have to.
Understand.
Rehabilitate a certain amount before we can do any demos and stuff, and we're anxiously wanting to get to that point, but, but like I say, we have to do it, you know, as the timeline allows, so, uh, you know, we're, we're fully aware of them, and we've encouraged people to, you know, come take advantage of this program if they have a, a structure or something that they'd like to seen torn down, clean up the lot and stuff. Uh, so, yeah, we're, you know, I like to think we're very proactive about it, so, uh, you know, if you have a particular issue, then I'd say visit with Dean about it, and maybe he's already, you know, addressed it, probably has, he's probably well aware of it, so, uh, you know, like I say, the amount of, uh, particular issues that he deals with, it's just almost overwhelming, like I say, when I come in and see the staff of letters that are going to get mailed out and stuff, so, you know, obviously, there's action being taken, so, um, if that answers your question.
Sure. And I've, I've got one more then, and that, that's concerning zoning. Uh, are there any zoning laws or ordinances, covenants, anything in, in Sylvan Grove concerning zoning?
There is no.
So what, what prevents somebody from coming into any neighborhood and putting up in a residential neighborhood and putting up a commercial business?
Well, as of right now, nothing. Uh, you know, just in the past, it's been, uh, the commercial buildings have, have been here for a long time and stuff, and, uh, you know, even, even well before the time I moved here and stuff, you know, they're, they're well established and stuff. Uh, I don't know, I can't think of a whole lot of issues where there's been a move to put a strictly commercial building in a residential area. I, I say that with a grain of salt, but, uh, it just really hasn't been an issue.
So if a person, if a person came in and, um, lot space, uh, accommodated that, and then, and they, and they put up a commercial business in, in a, in, in a neighborhood in a residential area, they could basically do anything they wanted to do? Welding shop, um, automotive, um, and anything like that?
Well, we don't have anything that's, that's concerning zoning, I can tell you that.
Would, would a building permit be required?
Yes.
And would this council, would this council approve a building permit in that case, even though the zoning law did not, uh, exist? Because this council would be the determining.
Right, determining factor.
Yes, it does require a building permit. It's a nominal fee of a dollar, but it does have to be approved.
I've, I've already purchased them, you know, for, for owners over there and stuff.
But yes, it, it, it does have to be approved. That's signed by the mayor.
And so, I, I, I guess so then the, the decision whether a commercial property existing in a residential area would be the decision of this council?
Pretty much.
I would say ultimately, based on the precedence, I know at one time there was a structure that was wanted to be put into town, and I believe it wasn't allowed as a commercial business.
I can think of one since I've been on the council, so.
So I, yeah, there has been a denial by the council of a commercial structure ultimately. Am I correct?
I, I guess, you know, it's hard, it's hard for me to answer your question of what would the council do not, you know, I mean, that's a, that's just a wide open question.
But when there, but then when there is no zoning laws, when there is no ordinances addressing that, that's what you come up against, and then we, and then we have those issues to contend with, you know, at a later date. And, and, and for example, if somebody did want to put up a, 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 a building in my neck of the woods over there, o- over on, on Kentucky Avenue, and, and have a business and stuff out of it, um, will, will I be notified to come and, and, and present my case to the council? Uh, is it, is this just going to be approved, and all of a sudden, there's nothing I can do about it? You know, what's the steps, what's the procedures? That, that's, that's what I'm after, is how, how do, how do I deal with that situation?
Well, yeah, Darren.
Why would you negative, negative if it's going to bring a business and bring money to the town? You just said, western Kansas, there's hundreds of towns that are fading away, any kind of business to make money and make jobs and bring in revenue and bring in kids for the school, isn't that a plus?
Well, I would, I would say this, that that would be, uh, uh, an excellent plus for the city. Uh, the thing about it is, the city, um, should have areas where businesses can come in and, uh, you know, uh, put those businesses up. City can even, even do like you do in the big cities and, and, and give tax breaks, and maybe even if it's city property or property that's condemned, that, that, that could be sold at a very low price. I mean, the city could do many things for that, but to take and just put a, 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 a commercial business in a residential zone, most cities in the United States don't do it.
It would depend on what's going to be going on in that building too, I'm sure.
Well, these are the things that lead, this is what leads up to zoning, and right now, legally, I mean, I'm, there's probably ramifications if council was sitting here and trying to say, they can't, they can't tell you yes or no. I mean, right down the street on Kentucky, there's already a business. I mean, there's already somebody's got a business in their garage. I mean, so you're discriminating if you tell somebody else they can't have a business. So when the, with zoning laws aren't there, when there's nothing that says that you can't not allow it, then how do you not allow it?
And I understand, and, and, and the thing about it is, when the businesses come in like that, and, and we say, well, we want to discriminate against the business, what about discriminating against the homeowner, you know, who doesn't have that? Because then, I, I believe the city may be opening themselves up for a lawsuit, you know, uh, of some degree possibly, depending upon what the situation is.
Well, I can understand if a person's, you know, purchased property and developed it and stuff for residence, you know, and, and, you know, you picked it for location, you picked it for the view you have and stuff, and then all of a sudden, somebody's going to plant something, and that you're going to walk out your front door and have to look at every day. I can understand your concern too. And I would think that the council would take that into consideration. I just have to tell you that it hasn't, there isn't a whole lot of precedent for this situation that you're talking about. Uh, you know, as you, you mentioned, you know, the city giving lots and stuff, we have sold lots, uh, people wanted to buy a lot with the intention of building a residence, and, uh, you know, we've, we've sold parcels of property at, at probably well, or at tax rates and stuff, you know, because they came and said, well, if you'll sell it to me, then, you know, I'll build a building on it, or a, a house. So, uh, that's kind of the extent of what we've had to deal with, at least in my tenure here, which is probably going on almost nine, ten years now, so. You're, you're absolutely right, with no zoning laws, that's, that's a, a situation we may. With no zoning laws, that's, that's a, a situation we may well have to deal with. But as of now, we do not have any zoning laws.
So it's on a, on a case by case basis, this council makes a decision and I, I guess I would ask that, you know, if there is, if there is an application or if there's somebody that wants to do that in any, any location in the city, that the, the residents in that area be notified so that they could at least present their case to the council when it, when it came up. I would, I would appreciate that.
Well, you know, when, when somebody would submit such an application, you know, obviously Jennifer would know about it, relate it to the council, that we're going to have to contend with this. You know, so it's not like it's going to be secret or, I mean, it's going to happen here in an open meeting. As far as being required for the city to notify, I don't know that there's anything in place, you know, any structure for, you know, that adjoining landowners or property owners, that it's required that we notify. And I'm just telling you, it's just not there due to what I said earlier. There just hasn't been a whole lot of precedent for these kind of issues.
Okay.
So.
And, and then the other thing, and it's, I haven't been to any council meetings, this is my first in, in four years and stuff, and I may have to start attending more on a, on a regular basis. But I, I understand that through rumor control or the grapevine, whatever it's called here in Sylvan Grove. In the military, we call it rumor control. But, but in any case, I, I understand that there's some thought to relaxing some, some ordinances and stuff. And I, I don't know, like again, what the ordinances and stuff are, but I would just...
Well, I can tell you for unequivocally, at least from my seat, I haven't heard the word relax on anything. Just, that's definitely the, the opposite direction of what, what we've been pushing on.
Okay, very good. That's, that's comforting. I appreciate that. But that's, that's the questions I have, that's the concerns I have and, you know, we'll, we'll see where, where this goes down the road and stuff.
Well, I, I mean, I appreciate you coming to visit with this and I, I hope those answers are sufficient because I'm just, I mean, all I can tell you is, is the history and the truth, you know? I can't change what happened in the past.
I, I understand.
Doesn't say that something won't change in the future, you know, as we move forward, but I'm just saying, you know, I, you know, what, what is, is, it's just we can't change the past. So, yes, sir.
Does he want to say, what do you want to see? You kind of, what do you, what do you want to change or what do you want to see? I just want to see that the ordinances that are, that have been established in this city, for whatever reason they were established years ago, if, if time changes and that's a thing for this council. But, you know, because, because things too modernized, some things, you know, are, are outdated and stuff like that, antiquated, whatever you want to call them and stuff. But if, if, if ordinances are on the books, they're on the books for a reason. They're on the books that, that the, that the people of Sylvan Grove can rest assured that the council will operate within those guidelines. Those ordinances just aren't for the homeowners and business owners and they're, they're also there for the, the governing body of, of Council Grove to act within those ordinances, uphold those ordinances, just like anybody in, in, in the government raises their hand and swears a, a, an oath to the constitution, to uphold the Constitution of the United States. The council is responsible to uphold the ordinances of Sylvan Grove. And if this council is going to do that, I'm satisfied with that. If, if they're going to change, I would like to know which ones are going to change. I mean, if it's going to be a public notice. I mean, ordinances changing and stuff should be public knowledge, even if a flyer went out, you know, a one-page flyer and I'd even volunteer to put them on everybody's door. At least we would know what was going on and, and that these ordinances that were put in place to start with to protect the many from a few is, is upheld. That's, that's what I want to see. That's what I believe is, is the proper and right thing for a council and even a citizen of Sylvan Grove to do.
Well, I can tell you that in the last probably five years, going back to the first time that we applied, applied for a housing grant, which the first time we were unsuccessful. And while we didn't, we were not notified, this is why, we heard through the grapevine, so to speak, well, the biggest problem was trash and junk vehicles. You know, people don't realize if they're people from the state, you know, if they're going to hand you money, they want to know what's going to happen with it. And we know that people came through this town and, and we didn't pass the muster the first time, obviously. And the council sat down and they said, hey, we're going to take, we skipped a year, we skipped one year, right? Between applicant, because if you get, if you get denied twice in a row, then you've got to wait, I think it's five years. So we elected to wait one year and in that one year-
Reapply.
-up our activities to, to start, you know, be more proactive, clean town up and stuff. And as we went into when we made our application the second time, then we pushed even harder. And like Dean said, you know, there were a lot of people showed up just on a volunteer basis and helped clean up. I mean, the amount of trash and junk we hauled out of this town-
I can't remember how many tons.
-just in a very short time.
Seven tons or something like that we hauled out.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so have we done enough? Not to my satisfaction, we still need to keep pushing. But I, I, I really, I really don't want to let anybody say that we haven't been active and that we haven't been trying, so.
I'm, I'm not saying that.
Right, but I'm just saying.
I want to know what procedures are and what, you know, what avenues a person takes, who they were, you know, if they have a grievance and stuff, who they go to, you know, what timelines are, what to, what, what I can expect, you know, if, if, if that is, is the case and stuff.
Well, and I appreciate you coming because I will be honest with you, most, most nights it's pretty lonely here. This is probably the biggest crowd we've had in this room for quite some time, you know?
About a year.
So, you know, feel free to come anytime with your concerns and stuff.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll be the first to assure you, they're not just summarily dismissed.
And if ordinances are changed, they have to be published in the paper twice. I mean, there's just things like that that we can't just like-
It's protocol we have to follow. Very well. I appreciate that and, and thank you for the, the job that you are doing here in Sylvan Grove.
And remember, Rick, we always got a seat for you.
I guess if you don't mind me asking, what, you said you've been here for four years. What brought you to the community? Just if you don't mind answering that, I guess.
Well, I've, I've got a house in Salina, Kansas. I've got a daughter that Jen and Austin, my son-in-law, they're part owners in the property over here. They live in Hayes. My other daughter's in Salina, living in my house there. We bought the place for a lake house, property over the lakes is too, too expensive and stuff. And so Austin Goodrow found this property and he tinkered about it. I said, you know what? I said, I'll go fifty percent with you on it. So I bought in half and, and we came out, started working on the house and I loved it out here. And I said, you know what? I'm going to live out here.
Awesome.
My wife's not all too keen about it all the time, you know, but she's got wheels, she can go to Salina, she's there at night.
There you go.
But anyway, I, I really enjoyed it. It's, it's, it's a nice little town, you know, there's, there's, there's been some growth since we've been here, you know, things have been happening and, and I, and I do see the cleanup and stuff. I think the city cleanup when they come with the trailers and stuff is a great thing. I, I think that, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of good things going for Sylvan Grove. But it doesn't take, doesn't take but a few things to start dragging it down in the dirt and, you know, to relax things and, and not to keep on top of it. And, and it's just like, you know, I take pride in my property. And, you know, when I first moved here, I was, I was under a lot of scrutiny. I was, I was checked out a lot by the city worker. I mean, I couldn't hardly turn around and I was, I was-
You weren't the only guy.
That wasn't you.
I'm just saying.
But I was, I was told on many occasions that here's the line, here's that, and this is what, and then all this stuff. And I thought, you know, wow. But that's okay. You know, it, it was no big deal that a lot of good things happened. The, the council approved things that, you know, we did over there and then we appreciate that. Building permits were approved and, and appreciate that. But I, I enjoyed Sylvan Grove and that's why I'm here. And I, and I'd like to see it, you know, become even more and better community than, than what it is today. There's always room for improvement. And again, like I said, you know, your, your prayer said it all that, you know, we want to make this the best little town you can be when so many are dying. I'd like to see this one live, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Anyway, thank you for your time.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for yours.
All right, Fair Board.
Thank you. Couple of things. We'd like to have the ranch trail again in April. We need approval for that.
You want it right now?
Usually you do.
You're going to be drying up by then?
If not, we'll put life jackets on it.
All right.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well, my first question is always to have insurance, right?
Yep.
Okay. I'll just provide a copy to Jennifer.
Can do.
I don't know, nothing conflicts with that, any other functions?
April thirteenth.
Okay. Day before Palm Sunday.
On that Saturday.
Yeah.
Yep.
Need a motion for that or what's the deal there?
Oh, anybody have-
I'd say consensus.
I'd say by consensus if there are no opposition.
Next is our building project we were talking about a couple of months ago. We had brought up the idea about a community center down there. We're kind of getting mixed emotions whether to make it a community center or not even include a, a meeting room of any type in there, just make it a livestock barn and be done. Kind of want to know where the council would stand on that idea. You know, can we, does it have to be a, a community center? You know, the, how I want to label that, like Hunter's labeled as a community center. Does it have to be that? Does it just, or can it be a, you know, like a, don't quote me, like a fifty foot meeting room or something on an end? Or can it just be a livestock barn? You know, when we addressed the council a couple of months ago, we were talking strictly about a community center.
Well, I don't think that there's any set criteria.
Okay.
You know, last time you were here and we talked and, you know-
We left it pretty open, I know that.
Gave you guys, you know, the okay to go ahead and crunch numbers and-
Yeah, because you had multiple floor plans.
Yep, yep.
This and that. You know, I don't think we're, haven't moved a whole lot either, which, you know, I certainly don't feel that there is, is just a down and dirty criteria that has to be a community center.
Okay.
I don't know, we've talked about that, you know, there's been through the years, several different proposals, you know? People think we need a community center, you know? Maybe we do, maybe we don't, I don't know. Just part of the question is, is the demand there for, you know?
And what does the Fair Board want? I mean-
We're, we're split. We want a, we want a new building for livestock. You know, half the Fair Board-
That's what they do want.
A hundred percent of the Fair Board wants one big building to include-
Okay.
Beef, swine and poultry. You know, we'd go basically from the existing showroom, clear down to the new sheet barn we built.
Right, right.
Everybody wants that. But half of us want to also stick a, a, a meeting room or something on one end of it and the other half of us just want to keep it as a livestock barn and that's it.
I have a question about some of that. Why cannot some of the other stuff be retrofitted or there's two buildings down there that you could have a meeting room in? Is that not right?
No, that's, that's right. That is correct. I, I think what, what, the half that wants a community center or something, they want it nice enough to use twelve months out of the year.
Right.
You know, climate controlled type area.
Well, I mean, as I said, you could do that with one of those buildings, right? Possibly? I'm, I'm just asking for my-
The 4H building, the cinder block, the concrete one is not heated or anything, it's not cooled. And the 4H building, or no, the metal building.
It's cooled.
Yeah, it is cooled, so that's it.
But you're talking like a kitchen, is that what you want in kitchens and/or bathrooms?
Yeah, kitchen bathrooms, something like that. I mean, even if you built something down there on the west end, you'd still have to have a bathroom in it just because the ones that we built are not functional in the wintertime, I guess you could say. They all re-drank currently, re-drank the lines. So, you know, it just makes more sense if you're going to build something, any significance down there, you just include a-
What, if I might ask, you know, you guys are talking livestock pavilion is what I would call it.
Yeah.
What, what do you do with the brand new sheet building? Tear it back down?
We've talked about repurposing it or just leaving it out of the picture altogether. It's the, the Meyer family was a big contributor to that and they have said that that's okay if it sits by itself over there, you know, or we can repurpose it. Also in that though, I believe the Post Rock Community Foundation was, they awarded us a grant for that. I think it was the Post Rock Community Foundation that did so.
That and memorial money, wasn't it?
Yeah. From Heath, which would be one of them, yeah.
Right. Do you want us to break the tie? Is that what you need? I'm asking you as simple as I can.
I'm a little, I'm a little, I won't tell you what side of that I stand on, but I'm a little worried what side you might pick. But we just, you know, there again, there, there's no point in moving in one direction or the other if the council has a, you know, if it's a black and white subject, you can't-
I don't know that we, we haven't really talked about it in one way, other than the night that you were here.
Just kind of, you know, wait and kind of see the different proposals.
Yeah.
You know, I guess one question that keeps coming to my mind too, what do your demographics look like for your 4H kids in the future?
Seems to be dwindling in numbers. That may sound a little harsh, but I think it is.
Which, which brings to light, you know, persons, you know, thinking about a structure like this and stuff, you know, right now, you, you know, you've got a good, robust fair, you've got a lot of participants and stuff, you know? But, but like I say, you know, if you look at demographics down the road, ten years from now, how many kids will be in 4H? Fifteen years?
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I mean, that's a very viable question.
I agree. I don't know how to answer that for you then.
Just like if you're going to build a new school, you know, you know, do studies and it's like, well, we, we're going to have X number of kids.
It's not who you have now.
Right.
You have to be a visionary, like into the future.
As far as if you did give the community center route, I guess my question would be, you know, would it be open to rent to the public? And if it would, who would be that deciding factor? Would it be us? Would it be the Fair Board?
If it's-
And if it is rented, where would the revenue-
If it's actually a community center, I'm not for sure where the revenue would go exactly. I'm, I'm guessing into a community center fund of some sort. But if it's actually a community center, there has to be a separate board that's in control.
Correct.
I don't know how that board gets made up, you know, whether it's a hundred percent council members or if it's all from the community or, you know, I'm, I'm not for sure how you do that, but.
I guess that was my only question is to, you know, if you guys are willing to try to put forth most of the effort to get this building established, you know, and it would be considered a community building, you know, you guys in a sense be relinquishing-
We would like a, a say and-
Some of the rights as far as that goes.
Well, part of it, it is on the city property. It becomes the city's.
Yeah, which brings us to the insurance, which I haven't brought up, I'm hoping you did, to your insurance guy.
Yes.
What'd you come up with there?
Basically, it depends on the structure. There's so much, I mean, I have a formula that can figure out. It, it's not going to be a huge amount. It depends on the structure. I mean, if we're talking a three hundred thousand dollar building-
Concrete building or a metal building?
You have to, you have to insure a three hundred thousand dollar building.
Got it.
So, I mean, it really does depend on the structure and the price of the structure and cost of replacement.
And the use of the structure.
Well, there's liability involved in, in it. There'd also be, so if you're having a community center, you have utilities year round, you're going to heat it and cool it year round. That's also on the city again. So it's not just the insurance, it'd also be all those funds as well.
And then the rental fee or the rules of the- And then the rental fee or the, so, rules of the.
Right.
Yep.
But overall, we have a large policy, so it's, it's not gonna be thousands of dollars.
It wouldn't be doubling your, not from what it sounds like.
It would be under a thousand dollars, I mean, depending, like if we're talking the big structure, probably a thousand dollar difference in our policy. If you're talking a smaller one, um, you're looking at less money, so.
But, but something you said though about having to have another entity that determines what that building does and doesn't do.
If it's, if it's labeled as a community center and, and by that, I mean, when you apply for grants, they have, you know, that's a different way of it. Different set of grants, they go for, you know, you could still have, you could, it could be laid out exactly the same, just not listed as that. And you can run it completely different, so.
Well, I guess where, where I was going with that was, then you have a, another party that has say so and authority over property that the city owns.
Yep.
Uh, you know, we, we kinda do that mishmash with the Fair Board at this point, you know, I, I guess I'd be a little wary of throwing another variable in the middle of it, have another entities contend with.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know, Hunter, Hunter's Community Center, do they have a board established?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
There, again, I'm not for sure whether it's a mainly city council.
The building.
I'm not sure how that one.
I know, that's what I'm saying, you know, there's, there's basic differences there.
It's, it's like a complete separate entity, isn't it? Yeah, as far as property and taxes.
I, I'd say you're still at a, you know, we're still waiting for, for proposals, I mean. Yeah.
Well, there'd be a lot.
I guess the answer to your question, you're.
Lots.
A lot.
Depends what you wanna do, different buildings, I mean, you could swing a hundred thousand dollars between one brand of building and another brand of building, so.
The answer to your question is probably no, there is no set criteria that has to include a community vote.
Okay.
I mean, the only, the only basis we had for that was what you guys proposed the last time you were here.
That's not a hoop you have to jump through.
That's good, we can continue on it. One last thing I might just bring you up to date on, we're considering replacing the lights on the radio arena out there with LED lights, and something, I don't care a hundred percent of the cost on, obviously, but.
Okay, but, we've, we have a new policy, we have to approve all mechanical work from now on.
Okay.
No more, no more people just coming in and volunteering and.
No more wiring it ourselves.
No.
Thank you, I'm glad you said that.
None of us can shimmy up the poles, don't worry about that.
I, I mean, that, that's, that's one drastic change in the last few months that we've made, and, and we're gonna, we need to revisit the, the existing structures.
Okay.
Uh, we think there's some issues with electrical power down there and stuff and we're.
There is.
Well, we're trying to get moving on that, but, but at this point, just so you know, and you share it with your board and you share it with everybody. Nobody goes in on that city property now and just decides, well, I'm gonna do this, it's volunteer.
How far does that go? I mean, little outlets and things like, no.
Everything, everything.
Okay.
No, absolutely nothing, so.
Is that just utilities work or?
It's pretty much everything.
So, ten in a barn or something like that?
Everything.
Because we carry the insurance.
Yeah, if you're gonna touch anything, tell us first.
Well, no, that's fine, I mean, it's, it's something we could still get approval from, it's not like a contractor has to do it or any, is that what you're getting at or?
It, it depends on what it is. Depends on what you're doing, if, if you're hanging ten, that's a little different than, than rewiring an entire building.
But, but just to keep it simple, at this point, nobody digs a hole, nobody plants a post, nobody you know, runs wire, nobody does nothing without coming and talking to us.
Yeah.
I'll pass that on.
So.
We would pursue. We're kinda looking at it.
Reiterate it, you know, it's the.
Alrighty, that's all I have.
Hey, thanks man.
Thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry we couldn't break the tie.
That's alright, we'll take care of it.
Alright. Skunks, who, who's here about skunks? I don't have a name. Huh?
I don't think anybody particularly is here, nope.
What?
Nope, nobody's here.
Nobody's here for skunk.
Well, that's a, that's an animal control officer, but we don't have an animal control officer.
You know, we talked about that one.
I know we did, but he is no longer here with us. I'm sorry.
I, I guess since from the agenda, I, I think we need to just touch on it, okay, I mean.
Yeah.
I, I can fully understand the concerns, uh, I mean, I have one goes by my house. Every once in a while, there's no dogs chasing him, there's no, nobody's bothering him, he just decides he needs to unload one, you know? Why, I don't know, but, uh.
You have a skunk that goes by your house? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, he does. On a fairly regular basis, you know, so I, once a month, I, just like.
This is interesting.
Well.
See, okay, with the skunk problem, um, I already told Steve this, but I had to call out to Wildlife and Parks for some other stuff. And I asked him, and legally, we, as a city, we can't trap them because they're out of season, okay? Uh, and, uh, according to our county laws, it's illegal to discharge a firearm at city limits, okay? Uh, our only viable legal option, if, if we want to pursue it, is the state of Kansas has licensed nuisance trappers, that's what they're called, nuisance trappers.
Because we don't have an animal control officer, correct?
Correct, now, if we had an animal control officer, they would have to be certified annually and, and all, I mean, all that stuff.
But they'll do this, the state.
They, yeah, the state has avenues we can take, uh, I tried getting a hold of a couple, we don't have any in our county. Uh, the closest one that I did talk to today has had a great bend. And there, there would be a fee due to traveling and, you know, if you're gonna set live traps, you gotta check within twenty-four hours, things like that. Uh, there's another one in Culver, but I haven't heard anything back from him yet, so. Uh, it, it could be a simple problem to, to legally solve the problem, it's, eh, there, there would be a fee. Okay? So, I mean, that's where we're at now, and also, you know, right now, it's, it's skunk mating season right now. I mean, they're out and about, you know, they're coming, you know, they're coming out. Now, do I think we have this kind of problem, you know, twelve months out of the year? No, I don't. Can I have licensed skunks in my yard? Yeah, I have, okay, now, you know? But, you know, abiding by the law, that's, that's our avenue. And I mean, I, I even asked the Wildlife and Parks officers, hey, can, could you come shoot them? And they said technically no, because that's, that doesn't go under our jurisdiction. And, and, and I'm sure, I mean, we have plenty, plenty citizens who would volunteer to take care of the problem.
But they need to become.
But by law.
That's right, they can't.
We can't, so.
I guess, I guess one aspect of it though, this leads right back into cleaning up abandoned building. I mean, any place that gives them shelter, you know? Parts of town that have just wild unabounded vegetation, looks like a forest, you know, just unkempt and clogging our shooters and everything else, so. It goes right along with it, but I, I, personally, I don't, haven't seen or experienced anything more so than any other year. Like say, it's that time of year, they're all over the highway.
Spring is brown.
Yeah, whether winter, whether it's still snowing or not, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, so.
Right.
Uh, but I guess if, unless anybody has anything, we'll just say we talked about it.
Run over them.
Swerve.
Yeah.
No thanks.
That's what you can do.
Should've been a skunk instead of a coon up north, huh?
And that's outside city limits, I'm not, outside city limits.
It stays outside city limits.
That's right, it's a Vegas rule.
Yes, sir.
Is there a restroom next door?
Yes, yeah, you go through there and follow the guard, follow the guard board.
They, like I say, you know, every year you see it, you know, you're driving at night, there's a gazillion of them around. So, unless somebody has anything else, I'd say let's move on and consider it talked about, so. Uh, we have a issue with the library during the remodeling and construction, as you guys probably know, they've ran into some structural questions and.
Twisted rafters.
Did, did some work that was beyond what the library was intending to do and stuff. And it's been my contention all along that obviously, you know, we need to take care of that currently now.
The library just had, has paid their.
They already paid, I, personally, I wish they would've, because they had it itemized out, I wish they would've kept it separate.
Yeah.
So, do you want me to just pay the library for that amount with the bill that they showed me the itemized difference?
I'd say so.
Anybody's have a reason why not?
No.
Unless they wanna, unless they wanna refund the money back and then have us pay them.
Now, since, since there's going to be money exchanged, we need a motion, Jennifer.
I can put it, um, I can, yeah, I don't have the amount, yeah, do a motion, please.
Ballpark, I do.
I, no, she hasn't given me the.
Five thousand, seven thousand, five hundred.
I, I feel like it was more like one thousand.
That's why they call it ballpark.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's kinda what Kirk, when, when we were talking to Kirk, you know.
I do say, but I don't have the billing yet, so.
I'm just, that's why I say ballpark.
Yeah.
But I, I think we can still make a motion to, okay, what would be the
Cover the expenses.
Compensate the library.
Reimburse the library for the repairs made on our behalf.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
For the city structure.
For the city too.
They present.
Mm-hmm.
Be a second.
A second.
About whatever amount.
Well, within reason.
Like I said, I think it's like fif- a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars.
You could give me a number not to go over and otherwise we go back and approve it.
Three hundred thousand.
Okay, you can.
Feeling very generous.
Back to my ballpark, it's a ballpark, you know?
Yeah.
Just our idea, still we never thought about.
Okay, Jennifer, along these lines, I make a motion to reimburse the library for the cost of repairs made on the city building um, with a ceiling of an amount of three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Unless prior contact to the city.
Did somebody already second?
Will did. Right?
Nope.
Ryan did, I did too, but I thought Ryan did, it was me.
Okay, alright.
I thought Ryan did, so I backed out.
Okay, so we have a motion to reimburse the library board for repairs beyond their remodel to the city building. Not to exceed three thousand dollars, but we don't think it's gonna be that much, right? Is that good enough? We have a second. We have been moving second it, aforementioned language, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Yeah, Kirk said the other day with all the snow that we had, it's probably a good thing it got done when it got, we could've had issues.
Heavy wet snow.
Yes.
Alright, where are we at here?
Aye.
Why don't we move, Dean, why don't you come talk to us?
Well, I don't have enough more to say, kinda waiting to see what, uh, I've been, been kinda busy like anybody else, so I haven't really been here a whole lot. Talked to Milton the other day, he took care of the rest of the things we talked about, so, um, it's muddy and wet and cold, so not the greatest time to get on people to clean their stuff up.
I know.
But, uh, again, waiting council's further decision on specifics on
Bad parts of life.
Residential type, commercial, we don't have zoning obviously, so whatever that line of thought was going last month, so. Again, you don't pay me when I'm not here, so it's not really hurting you too much, so.
Now, if we were going to designate residential versus commercial, we would have to initiate zones, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you don't see a lot of communities this size with them, but usually there's, you know, it just, it can't be. It's a two-way street, it can be prohibitive to some things, it can be, you know. The problem is you're, you, you know, then you run into your grandfather some things in, or you make so many zones because this little block has a
Yeah, do you zone around it?
This one's rental property, this one's home, this one's owned, and this one's got a business in the garage, and this one, you know, an empty lot, so.
Well, what's you guys thought, is that something we need to pursue? You know, it's like I said earlier, when Rick was up here, just, you know, it's unprecedented, we just, we just haven't had the issues so to speak, that you really had to, you know? Every once in a great while, something comes along, ultimately, this, you know, this is where the decision lies, at least for the time being, I don't know. You start zoning, and you hear the word zoning boards, and there's no end.
Oh, there's, that you can declare Main Street the commercial zone or whatever, and the rest of it only can be residential, I mean, there's, that's the simplest way.
So, does that mean I live in a commercial zone?
Yep.
Well, no, to the end of that. But, but I know there is.
You can't go to just the end of Main Street, because you got Falcons Gas, you got Ag one eighty one out there.
But it's in the county.
Yeah.
But that's what I said, that's one way, but then that would. I didn't say that was the right way.
I think do the three mile radius.
Maybe you guys are on the right track as far as tweaking some things possibly as they are to, you know, if that's the route you wanna take, you know, for accommodating businesses or for, you know, that type of thing. Um, maybe those can be said or stated in a way so that, uh, you know, the thought of zoning, and maybe you can, you know, not, you don't have to go that route, I don't know. Is it a concern to protect the residents from, you know, a multi-story, whatever, it goes and going across next door, I mean, you know?
If Amazon moves in or something.
We'll all be rich then, right?
But I mean, the one that was turned down years ago, that was a, was that because of like the dust? Right, maybe that was kinda a noise and a dust thing, right, more or less, what kinda came out of that?
Actually, actually, that was before I was on campus, just shortly before.
Well, I wasn't anywhere in this.
But no, you're right.
Yeah.
Uh.
But an interesting point that was brought up, what is going to denote discrimination? You know, what happens if somebody wants to open up an adult bookstore in their garage? And that garage is right next to a church? You know, I mean, that's, there's always goods and bads, I mean, granted, I would love, I would love business to move in. But is it open season? And is it open season on locations? I mean, do we as a community, do we wanna make all businesses?
Well, that's what I said.
Have a business license, I mean, not just like alcohol, um.
Not just cereal mall.
Yes, cereal mall, I mean, not like that, but just flat out.
But to have a business if I, you know, yeah, I mean, that's the only one.
We as, we as a city, we have notification that, yes, I'm going to open up a place of business at this location performing this, you know, this service.
And that's not uncommon for a, a lot of cities to have a, a, a business permit, a twenty-five dollar permit or things like that, that's pretty common.
Yeah, it's not to produce revenue, it's more to produce information.
Well, I don't know, you know, when we talk about attracting business, you know, we love nothing more than see some businesses come in and occupy the many, one of the many vacant buildings on Main Street. But, you know, we've already got issues with, some buildings are becoming decrepit on Main Street. You know, they're not, they're, they're not only not occupied, they're becoming, becoming an eyesore and a, and a problem.
Is that where that universal code?
And occupy the buildings if they're not for sale or anything either. You drive around Main Street looking for a building and there's not a single for sale sign, or was one since, since last year.
Shouldn't you have a universal code?
Yeah, to answer your question, international property management.
International.
Yeah.
Problem I see with your, what is a business?
Yeah.
You know, you got, you got me, I'm, I'm not open to the public, we do our own stuff, and you got Chris and Ted that have a building up in town. They're doing their own private, are they in businesses or are they not businesses?
Well, a business would be, you know, to, to provide goods or service for the economic gain of the owner.
Well, we're all in business to make a living, all right, yeah.
Yeah, and that would be providing a good or a service.
Goods or services.
Okay, that's a pretty vague, open deal.
You don't really wanna go there either.
If it's another board, it's just more people that have to get involved. I mean, it's just.
But, but you really don't want it to be incumbent on one or a very, very small number of people to be making that decision either. Yeah. I don't know, this, this would be an ideal issue to have a workday on. Which means we come, come in of an evening and we just dedicate, we're gonna sit here and talk about this.
About all the different four or five things that we need to discuss.
No, no bills, we're just, you know, there's a lot of cities have, have at least one work night a month, which I'm not proposing once a month, but. Does Russell have a?
Yeah, well, say Hayes has every, every work session, next week's a meeting, they have two meetings a month, they work sessions, but they meet every week.
Right.
I mean, they don't, they didn't slip by. I don't wanna come over that much. Well, I don't even be at the work session, I don't make decisions, so.
But I'm just saying, you know, there's so many times, we, you know, we have issues to deal with, we have to pay the bill and all that. And we're really restricted on how much time we, I mean, this is a big, big issue, big topic.
It is.
You know, and it really doesn't do it just to try and sit here and decide it. Ten minutes, so, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, and there's more information, like the League of Municipalities, there's, there's a lot of information out there that you probably need to consider for a town of our size, you know, pros and cons, bits and facts.
You know, it's, everybody likes to live in a small town because you really don't have so much encumbrances. Until you reach a point, you know, if you wanna go after the money, you're gonna have to clean it up. Which is what precipitated us getting to this point.
No, it's good for everybody.
Well, obviously, we'll have to talk about this more, but I think we need to move on. Anything else? I mean, for the most part, you're happy for the month?
Oh, I don't know about that.
I should, well, I don't know, who knows the weather and everything else, whether I'll spend, how much more time I'll spend here, but.
Well, you're right, every, everything is a.
Probably spend a little more time here, we'll see maybe, but, you know.
Might have to swim over here.
Yeah, it's alright. You're downstream from me, so.
You shouldn't bring your mouth boots.
I changed clothes before I came over. Look more like Milton, worse actually.
Alright, well, if not, we'll move on.
Thank you, Dean.
You want me to stick around for anything else there?
Yeah, why don't you just for the next one?
Okay, so, do you want me to talk about?
Impounded vehicles.
Okay, impounded vehicles, so, um, after talking with Dan Metz. He feels that we cannot, uh, take sealed bids. And, um, and that we needed to do some more things to cover ourselves legally, according to Kansas statute. So, in our ordinance that was passed, we did not, for some reason, we don't have it. The recovery, you know, getting how, how to dispose of the vehicle, what happens? Is not listed in sixteen-two. Um, I don't know if that section, anyway, that section's not in our ordinance, so it doesn't give us that, so we, I went back to state statute, but he feels that we need to do a public auction, if we're going to do it that way. If we're not going to just do salvage, um, so that means we need to set a date and do the proper publication for that date. Instead of doing, and then we'd have a public auction here for those vehicles. If we wanna go that route.
Can we legally do salvage though, according to the ordinance?
Well, that's the thing, our ordinance doesn't tell us how to dispose of the vehicle, that section's not in there. And, um, some of our past ordinances, it has been, some of our past ordinances give us the either public auction, salvage, or sealed bids. Sixteen-two does not give us those parameters. Um, I went back to state statute, Dan really felt like it needed to be public auction.
If, if we're going to sell them.
If we're going to sell them, yeah, other than salvage. So, um. And, anyway, so just.
But as far as state statute goes, can we, could we salvage them, I guess, as far as I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, I, I have the paperwork on, the only one, um, that had to go through an extra process is the van. That I failed to. I don't have the documentation needed, so I had to rego, had to go back and send another letter and wait for that, so I actually had the certified documentation to go with it. Um, so I just, somehow I don't, didn't have it. Um, so, but the rest of them, we have titles for, or tractor, it's not needed for the tractor, so, so I basically. Anyway, after a long process of him looking through everything, that's really what he felt we should do, so, however you wanna move forward. We can set a date for public auction, if that's the way we wanna do it, we can salvage them, um, doesn't matter to me, but.
I'm just kinda curious how state statute allows you to do that, and previous ordinance allows you to do that, and just a Mets wrote the new ordinance. And it's not in there, and he's telling you can't do that.
His concern is to cover our bases legally, that's, that was what he expressed to me.
We need to change the ordinance and ordinance and.
I would say the ordinance needs to be fixed with that in there personally.
I guess, I said it last time, I'll say it again, the, the vehicles we're talking about. We're, it's, it's not like we're standing to gain anything, we're gonna be lucky to recover.
Break even.
Our costs.
So when you come back to salvage.
And with the, with the publications, you know, at twenty-five bucks a shot. You know, we've already spent fifty for not, is that right? Because we're not gonna do that now.
Yes.
So we've already spent fifty and accomplished nothing.
What's Dan's hourly rate?
Yeah.
Do what?
What's Dan's hourly rate?
I just, I mean, if, you know, if, if somehow we had impounded a BMW that was worth thousands. It's a diff, I mean, there, there's, both, both of them are shell, one runs, I guess.
The van would be the one that I, that is the only one that I would have, would say is, would be operable, am I cor- correct? I, I don't, I mean, I don't know based on whatever, so, I mean, I, I probably anything can be operable, but.
You know, usually when people let you impound a vehicle, there's a reason. It's easier for us to have to get rid of it than that. I, I, I personally would just like to see us just salvage them off and be done with it. There's certainly nothing there that bears having a public auction and publishing and all that. It's just.
The other option moving forward, just to put it out there, I guess I just wanna say you could in the future, when you're abating that nuisance, you could have the person that's towing it tow it to their lot, they're in the business to do that all the time. And we wouldn't mess with it at all, once it left our lot, they would recover the cost of the towing and everything. So that's the other route you can go instead of putting it in our hands.
Once they hook up to it.
Yeah, it never goes on your mind.
That's there.
Right.
It's, it's theirs. If you want it, here's the bill. It's not, it's ours.
Right, and so they, they go through that process.
Deal with them, not us.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so that is another option, just moving forward, if you, if we choose that route.
Current ordinance is written in a way that that is fine, there's no, if it changes anything, add anything.
So, I, I said, I apologize, I thought we could move forward from last month, and then I just wanted to make sure that I had everything correct. So I checked with Dan and he really felt strongly about that, so.
So given all that, do you guys have a?
So our options are public auction or salvage. What do you guys think?
Salvage. Stupid.
Well, salvage is a pretty much a good price.
Yes, sir.
So what does it cost to tow a vehicle?
For an example, hundred, between a hundred and two hundred dollars approximately.
From here to the city lot?
To the city lot.
What's it cost from here to Hayes to Slidere?
That would depend on who you would call, and it could be upwards of four hundred dollars.
Did the city pay for that right away then?
The city has incurred the cost, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the owner didn't wanna tow, did he?
Right. In, in this case, yes. In, in the case of them removing the vehicle, it would be the tow, the person with the tow truck.
If, if they haul it to Hayes.
They would recover the cost.
Yeah, they, they keep all the money.
There was somebody has to pay for that person to come tow it, don't they? Or they just come out tow it, and they do worry about getting paid, or?
It, it, it depends on, yeah.
Yeah, like the city of Hayes, for example, they don't, they don't do their own impounding at all.
Right.
At Hayes Auto Parts out there, they do all.
But that's within a mile or two. I don't think you're gonna get anybody that can out here to pick up a vehicle and haul it to Hayes or Slidere, just. I'd say your cost for the way up is good.
We have somebody in the county too, we have, I mean, there's lots of different places, and it depends on the agreement with the city, it's just something they, we have to decide who we wanna use and go forward that way, what to.
All honesty, take two of those vehicles down, they were small vehicles, you put two of them on a truck. It's not like you're gonna have to make a trip for every single vehicle.
Yeah, you're not gonna hook up to the frame and drag it back to Hayes.
I was just asking.
No, you're right, it's a cost, there's a cost involved, absolutely.
When he towed those, he actually charged up, basically, he charged from him here and back, even though he didn't take the vehicle back though.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, mileage.
They have their own impound lot there.
Yes.
Yeah, but he charged, he charged to come up here, he charged mileage to come up here and go back home.
Yes.
He just didn't pull anything back with him.
Yeah, he went back empty.
Yes.
Lesson learned.
Uh, that was exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, we're not doing this to make money, we're doing it to abate the problem.
Now, the salvage price, we're gonna have to use city vehicles to haul it to a salvage yard, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's just a little more cost incurred. But it is guaranteed.
Well, there again. With the small amount of vehicles we have right now, I mean, we learned from this, we'll deal with what we've got. Do you know off the top of your head what the crush price is right now, do you?
That's where you go, if you haul them to Slidere and you have titles like a hundred and five a ton.
Okay, that's kinda what I thought.
Stuff drained out of them and everything.
I'm sorry?
You have to have all the fluids drained, oil.
Yeah, they have to be prepped, yeah.
I said, did CB give you a quote? I thought they did.
They did?
Once, once we arrive at the best. Sixty?
Was what, at, well, and they said that price could possibly go up, they are waiting for the new prices to come out. So, that was. It was before the last meeting.
Now's that CB coming out and getting it? That's just us showing up there with it.
And, and they did say that price would change, because like I said, it was before the last meeting. But they didn't have the current price, so it may be higher.
I would dare say is that they'll take it as is, we don't have to drain.
Oh, there's no prep.
Just dump it.
I didn't ask that.
Well, I'm, I know.
Being honest.
Yeah, that's, well, that's.
I used to haul a lot of cars to Acme, you had to take the gas tank off, you could throw it inside the compartment, inside the cab, but it had to be off the bottom of the car, so. Not crush it anyway. So, anyway. So I guess at this point, what, what do you guys wanna do? I don't have a vote, but I'd say just salvage them out and get them out of here and be done with it.
Quick and easy or?
Spend any more money publishing and all that, just be done with it. I would dare say. If we kinda do some logistics, if Terry has to go to Slidere for something, he could haul, you know, put the trailer on, take them, dump it off.
Then do we have to designate where we're taking it? Or just?
Only if you guys want to.
I mean, I know.
I'd say the closest place that'll take it.
Is it that salvage that's on Old Forty, right, or west of?
No, it's in south end of Beverly. Of course, I get, my thought was drop it off there and drop your trailer, go to Slidere, come back, pick your trailer up, come home. Cause like he said, if you, I, I'm assuming if you go, what's the other one out on forty?
He's not the highest price line either, the metal's a little higher.
We're not talking that much because those vehicles aren't that big.
Yeah, if you go by ton, yeah, the ton.
It'd be lucky if they weighed tons. Anyway.
Salvage.
Salvage? Do you guys wanna vote on it, or just consensus? Let's vote on that one, that way we're clear. I can't a motion to. I don't wanna put words out here.
I mean, I don't care, six in one hand, half dozen in the other.
What's the other option? There's only this option, salvage.
Salvage or public.
Right.
Auction.
Right, so, it's, I moved. More publications.
More publication and.
You have to have an auctioneer or bids or whatever.
You don't have to have an auctioneer for that, I mean.
It's just.
Steve can, Steve can just say, okay, who wants to buy this car? I mean, literally, that's a public auction, you know, it's kinda like a police auction, you don't have to have an auctioneer.
I just. It's not worth, it's not worth the hassle, okay? The three vehicles we have, it's not worth the hassle.
I can move to salvage the vehicles that we have on our lot. And whatever Terry makes a trade.
How about you sell them, maybe have a lot on there.
We can't do it.
Salvage man, he wants to salvage them.
Has to be a terminal, has to be somewhere, that, that's it. He's the go-between.
Yeah, well, like Steve said, he doesn't have a salvage license.
That's why we got in this position last month.
Okay, Sid, we have a motion on the floor?
I put one up.
Motion to.
Salvage those cars that we have on our impound lot.
Second?
Yep.
The motion is second, salvage cars that we have currently impounded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Were you were the second?
Yes.
Motion carries. Summer help.
So. Do you want me to put out ads for summer help?
Talked this morning with, you know, we have Kenny, we have Larry.
Yeah.
Tracy, but.
So those three are willing to do the mowing and, oh, okay, that's what I'm like, so we don't.
That was my first question. Do I? Yeah, come on up.
Terry, do you want a high school kid to mow?
Or somebody to mow.
Anybody.
Yeah, um, if, if, if possible, kinda like if they, like did in the past, or like. Well, we tried like last year, and there was not any applicants, and then, well, yeah, and then then eventually, um, we had two retired guys that were able to work, you know, a couple days a week between the two, but yes, I, I would like the opportunity if, uh, there's a high school kid that's sixteen and older, uh, to, uh, work the summer.
They just have to be sixteen to mow?
Yeah.
Yes.
Insurance purposes, I think.
Did the re-scale move away, that moved for us?
The rees maybe did.
She got a different job.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
No, not necessarily, I just wanted to make sure.
I would say, um, ad, we can advertise at the high school. You know, put up flyers and use our designated publication.
Well, the question comes up, though, in the past, we've had adults apply for this job.
Yeah, I'd say.
I mean.
First, yeah, I'd say hire the best applicant, I, I don't think we need to designate a certain age.
I'll put prob, I'll put, I will put the flyers out and put it in this week, so with the intent to have applications in by the count, next council meeting, so you can review those.
Is it ten an hour?
Seven.
Hmm, seven.
It's seven, okay.
It's normal.
Good enough.
And they, are they working four, they work forty hours?
Not much a slave driver wants.
Oh, okay.
I think it's just, yeah, Terry's discretion.
Up to forty hours for at one full-time, uh, summer. See if we get any applicants and then in the meantime, uh, should we keep, uh, the two other fellows that are, um, break glass, you know, that, uh, I still call on to. You know, a few hours or a day or two.
Well, yeah. Definitely keep.
In a truck where they.
Yeah, for the heavy.
Heavy equipment operation.
Yeah, yeah. Terry assured me that, you know, although with the moisture, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of.
There's gonna be a lot of, yeah.
Uh, but.
And scooping of, of, uh, the gutters and stuff.
You're sure they can even keep them busy whether they're mowing or not.
Yeah.
All right, dog clinic.
So, um, I talked, huh? But I talked with the mobile vet person, I mean, that's, that's who we had last year, I can choose somebody else, um, I did speak with them. They, she has almost every Saturday booked already, uh, so they talked about maybe doing a Wednesday evening from like three to six. Instead of doing a Saturday morning.
Thieving all used to do Friday evening, start ten o'clock about five o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, it used to be a weekday.
Okay, well, it was fine with me, I just didn't know what council called about it.
No, I mean.
I know, you have to have it at least so that people can get off work, I think, and make sure that those people can get there.
Well, I think, they were always like from five to eight.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Cause that's that mobile vet that comes to Lincoln, right?
That's who I used last year, um, like I said.
Yeah, because she has everything.
Yeah, and she can also do a lot of other things, um, or, you know, whatever, if needed.
Where is she out of? Hoysington.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, not too terrible far, could we request like four to eight?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think she was open to it, it's just that the Saturdays were booked and I wanted to be able to.
Yeah, I'd say.
No, it's Friday night.
Yeah, anytime.
You said a Wednesday though.
That was just a date that she gave me and I.
And I don't know what days, I don't know what days they go where, cause I think they go to.
Like, they're in Lincoln two days a week.
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
And then they go to Hoysington, I think they go to like Larnard or somewhere too, so.
Right.
I don't know what days, that might be availability for her too.
Right, exactly, so I just wanted to make sure that anything wasn't a problem.
They have a permanent building now in Lincoln.
Oh.
Really?
I don't know where it's at for sure.
Well, it's pretty close because we put in the sign.
Okay.
Or they were wanting to be reimbursed, get a grant.
Where, where are they at?
Well, I, I don't know, I can't tell you, I can't tell you the address, but it's just around the corner from. Well, State Farm, I thought, or somewhere around in that area.
Okay.
Only those two.
Not there in Canterbury's old building, is it?
Yeah, right across the street from the county health department.
That old shop? That old shop?
Oh, Westside.
Well, State Farm, they don't have that whole building, they, they just have an office.
Is it one little building?
It's a little.
It's a little building, yes.
Yeah, that itty-bitty building.
The brick building.
Yeah.
Sits on the south side of the street.
They've been, they've been working on it for a year, but they're supposed, that's what they're supposed to be moving into. Actually, they have it permanent.
Uh, motion to donate five hundred dollars to Post Rock Community Foundation for match month, I thought we did that last one.
We never had a motion and I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we donate five hundred dollars to Post Rock Community Foundation.
Second? Second? Okay, motion is second to donate five hundred dollars to Post Rock Community Foundation for a match month, just at the Poteback Day Trip, don't you, Kenya?
Yes, that's what we had, I wrote it at the end of the month and, and I just thought if they didn't make the motion, then they would just tear up the check.
Okay.
But that was the way that was handled.
So.
Cause that was my understanding is their intent, but there was never a motion, I felt like there needed to be a motion.
Motion is second, donate five hundred, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye, hold the same sign, motion carries.
All right.
Terry, what you got for us?
A few things, the Toro Lawn Mower, uh, it's a year two thousand sixteen and it has four hundred and twenty-two hours on it, so it's, it's in, it's still pretty good shape. The question was like, how old is it, how many hours? Uh, so, that's where that stands, and then I've got, where I forgot to do the water usage and loss report last month of the year of two thousand eighteen. This is where I hand everybody, I don't, I didn't make the graphic thing, but, uh. It, uh, this, this kinda, this is a little, the master meter reading, uh, each month.
Eighty-eight.
Terry, give me the.
Okay. Okay. And those are two different ones.
Yep.
Terry got some, he was trying to get it down.
Oh, it's two.
Yeah, there's two.
You'll have two different sheets.
Yeah, two different sheets, everybody got two different sheets. So, basically, on, uh, water consumption, we did, uh, ten point nine, let's see, ten million nine hundred and forty-three thousand gallons pumped for the year two thousand eighteen. Um, and then towards the end of, uh, the year two thousand eighteen, uh, we started coming up on the well depth, which is positive. Uh, cause like I know, we were pretty stagnant and were losing there quite a while, like last year, this time dust was blowing, well, uh, this year, uh. Of course, you see two months into two thousand nineteen, you know, we're gaining, you know, like seven inches, five inches and a half, uh, well depth, uh, for water. Uh, which is a positive, so we're actually coming up, you know, our well depths are forty-four foot, four and a half inch, uh, from, uh, surface of the neck. To where the water touch, one forty-three feet, one inch in the other one, that's pretty good, um, coming up. Uh, let's see, some of those million gallons pumped per the month, uh, last January and February of last year, let's see, of the year eighteen, there was like. Couple leaks going on and then it got within reason, and then it was like from the month, uh, June through. September, we, we pumped a million gallons more right on the dock every month, you know, every, every couple months, otherwise we've done pretty good. And we were doing, we were doing okay last month and the month before, there's a, there's a leak that's not surfaced somewhere or come out of a can yet, but I think there's a leak probably going on. About since last, or a week ago Thursday, that just not surfaced or ran out of a can yet, meter can, that's what I mean by meter, tit can. Um, so, there could be a possible leak, hasn't right now, how much, I don't know, where it happened, but.
You mean out of residence?
Or a main.
Or a main.
Or a service line.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah, service line, cause if it was a main, oh, it'd be coming through the ground somewhere pretty good. But nothing is softened up.
Right now, it's all the excess water.
Be digging for a while, easy digging though.
It'll come when at least, uh, so that's the water usage loss report for the year of two thousand eighteen. Um, pumps, uh, I think pumps two hundred thirteen gallons a minute, you know, when they do pump and, uh. That's that on that, I guess, um, we've been doing a lot of snow removal links, uh, recently, the past couple weeks, two Sundays in a row and then Wednesday. Um, let's see, the water tower inside and out refurbishment, don't know when yet, but, uh, I've been talking to that one company and then they, uh, have a sister company that they bought. That deals with where they come in, cause I was told that, that's a big deal, you know, twenty years ago when it was done, um, uh, the Suez Company. That, uh, it won't cost anything inside and out, uh, for, uh, that way it's set up, you know, the maintenance costs on it. What will cost, and I don't have figures on it, and they're just talking with me as of right now, cause like, uh, it's still cold and they're dealing with frozen stuff, tanks. Uh, further south, this company that's, uh, part of Suez Company, they come in with expansion tanks, hook up to the, uh, fire hydrant. And then whatever that's called, where the pumps don't hammer on and hammer off, they'll, they'll gently come on and come off, they also, uh, do that with the water plant. And then they'll have figures on what that'll run with me, cause I was told in twenty years ago, you know, there was like two other different companies that came where. One company came out of Nebraska with the tanks and then the Ellis Company Electric came to do the pumps at the type of a thing, so. Right now, it's just talk, when it's gonna happen this year, you know, type of thing. And then they said, well, it'd be good for another twenty, then after that, type of thing, once the tanks, or the water tower tank's been painted inside now and gets cured on the inside. Could be two weeks offline, up to six weeks pending on, depending on.
But the pressure tanks you're talking about, they act like, well, it's a pressure tank, just like you have in your home well.
Yeah.
It takes place of the tank, the, the tower will be offline.
A two thousand gallon tank, so to speak, versus, so that way you're not throwing water out on the ground every day for a couple weeks or whatever, kinda like that one day where. When they did the, uh, tire inspection, well, you have two places in town that you hook up and you're just blowing the water out on the ground, so you don't blow lines.
Yeah.
You know, pressure relief valve systems that you put on the hydrants, so that's that on that subject, it's still just talk right now, process. Uh, we'll be starting the small system testing coming up here before too long, um, uh, Tracy, uh, and I will be, uh. Not doing that, uh, or we'll be testing in Wichita, but we're not going to that, uh, conference, so there won't be the cost of that, cause I asked them, can you just go to just take the test and not pay that? Big fee to take that in, cause that blew my mind, I mean, I'm there to take a test, they said, yes, they can. They urge you into a room of your own and you don't go in the big place to go take in all the sights and sounds, and I'm fine with that, so.
No drinks and orderers.
And is this for your?
Yeah, small systems water and gonna, uh, do it first and just solely start on it, and that will be at the end of this month, the twenty-eighth of this month. And then, the, uh, 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 the, yeah, um, yeah, we're doing, um, yeah, the small systems, uh, wastewater. We're gonna go for it the next month at Hayes, type of a thing, to focus on one subject at a time, type of thing. And we're gonna do a couple seminars in the main, or go to a couple seminars in the meantime in April, that's on that, just to let you know, uh. That pretty much is it, it looks like.
Anybody have any questions for Terry?
Good luck on your test.
Yeah. Study, study hard.
I missed one item too, on our agenda, uh, unattended vehicle, or unattended trailers and trucks. Uh, during the course of plowing snow, it's kinda like. Going along and you have a boat or a trailer sitting there that's not hooked up to anything, just to plow around it and stuff. A lot of cities have an ordinance where, if not all year round, I know Hoysington does, they used to give me hell about my boat. But, uh, you cannot leave a trailer unattached, sitting on a city street. It's hooked to a vehicle, that's one thing, but if you can't unhook your boat, drive away from it, leave it sitting on the side of the street. And in the past, it's been four or five years ago, we talked about maybe doing something fall and spring, you know, we know there's a lot of lakes in town, we're a lake town.
Oh, yeah, summertime.
But, you know, for the purposes of plowing snow and, you know, we have, I confirmed a couple trailers that sat that we didn't get to spray the streets because the trailers were sitting there unattached, so. Throwing around the idea of maybe having an ordinance to where you can't leave a trailer unattached in the city.
I don't need a personal vehicle.
Just on a street, correct?
Vehicle, well, the one thing, vehicles got insurance.
Still gotta, still gotta go around?
Huh?
Still gotta go around?
Go around, yeah, you do. This last snow. Fought up pretty good windrow against whatever's sitting on side of the road.
Yeah, by all means, it wasn't deliberate, you know, just material was starting to really.
Build up.
Built up, and we actually had a real winter this winter, kinda like the past.
Didn't know how to act this, so they're gonna have to push now. So, anyway, just something to contemplate, uh, like I say, the aggravation level's enough, just going around the vehicles, but when you have. Attain a trailer sitting there, why, you know, if you got a boat, get it off the street, whatever it is. If not, Terry, you're done.
Yeah.
Okay, Will, you got anything? This?
Yeah, the US, we had talked about last month. That's the last one from the meeting, that was the one that's taken out before.
You wanna explain it?
So, last month, we talked about the ordinance and, and screening, so the original sixteen one that was passed, it was in effect for two weeks, I believe, is what, looking back at the records. It's the one that has, uh, the section for allowing for screening, um, I'll just read it. To any person conducting a business enterprise in compliance with existing ordinances or business regulations, or who places such vehicles behind screening if sufficient size, strength and density to screen such vehicles. From the view of the public to prohibit ready access to stored vehicles by children, however, nothing in this subsection shall be mis, shall be construed to authorize the maintenance of a public nuisance. That was what we were discussing is the commercial property.
Ah, there you go. So, it's, literally, it comes down to screaming.
But it sounds like it almost needs to be restrictive enough that kids can't get in past it.
Mm-hmm, that was the way that it was, that was the original ordinance and then there was a change made to not allow the screening.
As of right now, screening.
Right, that, that section is out of our, out of the current, everything else about that ordinance is the same, so that was, anyway.
Okay.
So. Just wanna, cause it was asked.
All right, do you have anything?
Um, we need to go back and address ordinance sixteen two about the salvage slash public auction. Cause it, cause the way I took it, it was open-ended.
Yeah, it is, it doesn't give a, it doesn't have a section for the disposal, dispersment of those, um, and it's something.
Previous ones did, correct?
I, I think it's a simple fix, it can be written if you want to have that ready, I can have it ready for the next meeting.
Are you guys getting that?
So, you wanted to cut the paste out of the other one?
Basically, that's what I, that's my intent, yes. I mean, on how they review it for.
So, it just outlines the options.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the previous ordinance.
It doesn't encumber us that we have to do.
Right, basically, it has a section, so disposition and sale of vehicles impounded, and it just gives you that it can be sold. Or at public auction for cash or. and it just gives you that it can be sold or at public auction for cash, or, I mean, it just, it kinda lays out what you need to do per state statute, I mean, that's what it goes off, I, I, I did a lot of reading on the state statute on this subject.
Thank you.
And so, this is in accordance with the state statute, so I would feel comfortable taking this section out of the old ordinance.
Sealed bid listed as viable option.
Yes, in the previous ordinance, yes.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying, do you want?
So, what?
But Dan doesn't want that.
What would Dan do with that?
Well, um, I guess.
He wouldn't want that because we don't have it in our current ordinance.
I guess I need to address that as well, so.
So, if, if we were to adopt the modified sixteen two with the options listed, salvage, public auction, sealed bid, Dan would be okay with the sealed bid?
Because it was per ordinance.
Oh, man, I think we need to get that done.
Put it back in there.
So, on top of that, I just wanna mention too, that I, I know we've talked in the past, we looked at different legal counsel, I did talk to Chance Martin, who is legal counsel for Hunter and Cocker City, um, he does not cha- charge a retainer fee, um, he's available to be at the meetings and he would charge a hundred dollars an hour for the work that either if you're coming to the meeting or for the work that's done for the city, so.
So, it's as per needed.
Right, and it's less than what, less than what we're paying per hour for legal counsel now.
To be honest, he hasn't given us a bill in a year.
Yes.
So, I've.
But we're paying for a judge, yes.
A, a judge, but that.
Well, that's separate.
That's, that's for the management.
Right.
Which is totally separate, um.
But he could be at our meetings.
Mm-hmm, tha- that's the big thing, is, is Dan cannot be at our meeting.
Only if we wanted him to be.
Right, he wouldn't have to be, but he could be.
Right.
So, I mean, if you wanted him at every meeting, you'd have that availability or you could say, I really, we're discussing some, something that we need your legal counsel, we wanna make sure that you're here.
I would love that.
So, I just.
About you?
That's right, that way we don't have to wait thirty days or whatever.
And, um, the biggest reason Dan's not here is 'cause of conflicts with the Lincoln city council.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, their meetings are exactly the same time as ours, so, yes, it, you know.
Where we have to name and maintain a judge, do we have to name?
Name and maintain legal counsel.
Right, we would have to make that change, yes.
Okay. So, you guys think that's something you wanna do tonight, or you wanna think about it, or what do you wanna do?
If you would like to, also, he could be at a meeting and you could discuss, I mean, you could meet.
Should we interview him?
Mr. Martin.
I mean, I'm not joking when I say that, I would like to discuss this with him.
Yes, he would be available.
Have him up to next meeting?
I would, I would like that, please. I mean, it's up to you guys, that's just my personal.
I've met him.
Okay, see, I haven't met him before. And I just, I feel like with Dan, I mean, we're never gonna get, we're never gonna get him here and, I mean, I do understand.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's, it's just, it's difficult for him to.
Like I said, it just, to me, it just clears up a lot of stuff a lot quicker.
Oh, my God.
We don't have to wait the thirty and sixty days to do that kinda stuff and it's, that way it's done, it's over.
Okay.
For the most part, I'm sure there'll be some things that you have to.
Anything you need on that?
I think so.
I was at U when we got.
Yeah, and I just said, do we need to change sixteen two, you wanna change sixteen two tonight?
I would have to write it up and get it ready, so that you could actually sign and publish.
It has to be published twice.
Right.
Well, after, yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be written, then it's gotta be reviewed, then it's gonna be put it on, then it's.
But I could have it, right.
Okay, yeah.
But I could have it ready for the next meeting, I could send it out, I, I will email it to you at any time so you can look at it.
And thank you for emailing agendas and minutes, I really appreciate that.
I think it helps.
So, you got anything else?
Okay.
Tracy? Sure?
Actually, he does too, has something. Didn't you win us something?
You didn't win anything.
Didn't you get a scholarship for Kansas Rural Water Association?
Oh.
I did, yeah, well, I'm a member of Kansas Rural Water, so I applied for that scholarship and won it, so we go to that con- conference.
In March.
In March.
So, it's a thousand dollars scholarship from Kansas Rural Water Association and you have to have, be a.
You have to be on rural water?
You have to be a child of an employee of a, of somebody's a member of the Rural Water Association, which we are, so.
Can't remember who any applicants had, there wasn't very many.
Do you have to be on rural?
No, but you have to, so you have to be an im- a son or a daughter of an employee of a member system, so we, as the city of Sullivan, are a member of Kansas Rural Water Association.
It's a whole state of Kansas.
Don't you get that magazine once along your mail?
Like there's under a judge.
Yeah, but.
Over the whole state.
Anyway, it's exciting.
Number forty-one on my thing, it's the fourth one.
All right.
Good job.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
Bondi, you got anything?
I'll buy that.
Got anything, Jennifer?
Okay.
Financials?
Yes, so, any questions on the water, I don't have. Sorry, forgot how to book them, um, as first quarter, council will pay, this next pay period and so does a lot at the end of the week, uh, everything else is pretty standard. Um, I don't have the insurance on there, but that will probably be next month now. So, but that was, I don't know if you look up a little, but that'll be close to fourteen thousand, so, um, for February, yeah. Uh, total income for February was fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-seven oh one, the total expenses were twenty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-three thirty-one. Everything is pretty typical. And like Terry said, our quarterly, uh, water, uh, was payment was made, but that's for our maintenance agreement that will cover the cost of that repair to the water tower, so. It did grow up a little bit this year by like a couple hundred dollars. Any questions?
Entertainer motion except the financials.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, we accept, uh, financials is finished.
Yes.
Motion second, second financial is presented, any discussion? Not all, fair to say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side, motion carried. All right. Well, I've seen that. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Jackie's not here.
I know.
We don't know what to do.
Let me pour.
My brother.
Motion to adjourn, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.